Okay, folks, it is 6:31 and we have everybody here. So I will call our meeting to order. Welcome, Counselor Cohen, and ask you to introduce yourself.
The Lincoln District Two.
Thank you. All right. So I'll go over a few meeting logistics. Anyone who's participating remotely, I would ask you to change your name display on the screen to your first and last name so that we know who we're talking and listening to. I would, anyone who wants to address the council, one, you do need to be recognized by the chair. Two, we would ask you to start by stating your name and telling us where you live. We ask everybody to keep your comments and questions to under three minutes. And if you're speaking about a particular agenda item, we would ask you to keep your comments germane to the topic at hand. And if you stray from the topic or go over time, we will remind you of the expectations. With that, we'll move to approve the agenda. Are there any requested changes to the agenda? Okay, we'll consider the agenda approved. Next up, we have general business and appearances. This is an opportunity for any member of the public to address the council on any topic that is not on tonight's agenda. As with the other items involving addressing the council, we ask you to identify yourself by name and where you live and limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone? Yes. Why don't you step up to the microphones?
My name is Regina LaBrizzi, and I live on Berlin Street in Montpelier. I was curious. I don't know the name of the road, maybe it's Fisher Road, but it's the one that continues up Berlin Street to the exit seven. And it's been, it was closed like at least for a year before the flood. I don't know if you talk about this or where is a good time or a place to discuss it.
I could tell you that is Fisher Road. I don't think it's Fisher, but that's in the town of Berlin.
Oh.
It's not here. And it's so.
Thank you.
It's on them, it's not on us. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Deputy Chief Joe Walzer of the Berry City Fire Department. I'm also the chairman of the Vermont EMS District Six. And I was wondering if I could have Lieutenant Larrabee please come join us at the podium. I'm here tonight. Each year Vermont EMS District presents the Virginia Caffin Award to an EMS provider in the district that best embodies the spirit of the Virginia Caffin. Virginia was instrumental in the modernization of EMS and EMS education in central Vermont. Virginia and her husband founded Cabot Ambulance this year. This year, I'm pleased to announce that Lieutenant Jacob Larrabee has been awarded 2023 Virginia Caffin Award. Jake has been a big part of emergency medical services in this community and in central Vermont during almost his two decades of service. His nomination letter spells it out how well deserving Jake and his commitment to his patients and the city of Montpelier. Lieutenant Larrabee continues to mentor his staff to strive to provide the best patient care he can. Lieutenant Larrabee has stepped forward and become one of the lead instructors to continue the implementation of the crisis intervention team training here in central Vermont. I am honored and excited to say that he has been able to bridge the gap and foster continued conversations and teamwork between EMS providers, police officers, and mental health clinicians, and continues to remove the mystery of what each can bring to the table and to learn from each other on how we can streamline and maximize each contact with a person in crisis. Please, I'm going to read the nomination letter. That pretty much says it in a nutshell. Please accept my request to nominate Jake Larrabee of the Montpelier Fire Department for the receipt of the Virginia Caffin Award. Jake Larrabee grew up in Montpelier area and graduated from Montpelier High School. Jake has been with the Montpelier Fire Department for a total of 23 years, with 21 of those being full-time. Jake has been a lieutenant for the Montpelier Fire Department for approximately 20 years. Jake is currently an EMS certified as a Vermont EMT and national level EMT. Jake has held and worked in many roles throughout his career and continues to advance his knowledge on a daily basis. Jake has been the local union president, working for the professional firefighters to obtain advances in the protections firefighter and EMS workers in Vermont, to include things like cancer presumption. Jake has been a child care seat installation technician. He currently is an active instructor for the Montpelier area and the field of CIT Crisis Intervention Team. He recently participated in Training of Active Threat Integrated Response Course, School Mass Casualty Events. Jake is also a member of the Professional Firefighters of Vermont Peer Support Team. This team is a phone call answering for a firefighter EMS that may be experiencing crisis and need of peer talk and assist them in getting services that help they need. Before working in the fire and EMS field, Jake had worked for Washington County Mental Health. He is a husband and father of three sons, and he actively participates in helping and cheering on their sports team members. Jake is also, this year has become a certified referee for high school level basketball. Jake is a definition of public service. He continues to actively work on the ambulance, taking calls, and his compassion and care with the patients is above and beyond. He is a mentor for two new members joining the department and is how to treat and interact with patients. He also works part-time during his limited free time with East Montpelier Ambulance, as well, again, I ask for consideration for Jake Larrabee to be Virginia Caffin Award.
That was unexpected. Yeah, Ken said there was something happening at the meeting and he needed, he needed a few people from the union executive board to be there. Well played. I don't do praise very well, but thank you. This is a great honor. Yeah. Happy that I'm found a job and a career that I enjoy and I can make an impact and looking forward to where our fire department can go with new leadership and thanks for the support.
That's a tough act to follow. I'll mention before my clock starts that when I approached them about providing some training to folks at shelters or who deal with people on the street for, to administer Narcan and to deal with drug overdose emergencies, he was right there with offers and suggestions and it was commendable.
That's great.
I want to raise a couple of things back to starting. The, and one is a consequence of deferred maintenance. We've had turnover over the years of public works directors and so this mistake, very expensive and time-consuming mistake on school street of not knowing what pipes are charged, finding new pipes that nobody knew where they went or where they went, and cutting into a live pipe and then nobody knowing where to find the valve to turn it off. It's estimated by some experts that this has cost us 20 grand in the last 24 hours, you know? And it's unexcusable. It's really knowing, testing, even if we have to do some carefully timed outages in order to establish the bounds of which valves control what, that's long overdue. How many more times will this happen and under less favorable conditions? This one was easy to fix, but it delayed getting off a school street before the school opened. I want to raise an issue about the Elks, oh, Elks Club problems, which were given lip service and a lot of critique of the council's action or lack thereof at your last meeting, seems to have fallen off of urgency. It's not on the agenda tonight. And I've written to the council and said, you know, assigning it to the task force that's had five years to do it. We articulated that charge five years ago and they haven't done it. So now saying do it in 30 days, especially with the current makeup of the task force is just going to, is it, we'll be 30 days closer into winter with still nothing. So I think this council needs to add it to the agenda under other business and wrestle with this issue. How are we going to get a plan and with what scope and breadth and management team? Good Sam's the first to admit that they cannot handle all of Montpelier's needs and Montpelier has neglected to build capacity to meet the difference. I've told you, there's 60 people out, you know, already and another 60 or more being ejected from hotels. And Good Sam's proposal said they were going to house 20, you know? So you got a problem there. Country.
Thank you, Steve. Anybody else in the room who likes to, like to address this under general business and appearances? And I do not see, oh, DeeDee Brush.
I'm sorry for not knowing this ahead of time. And the Confluence Park is on your agenda. Is that when I would address the council with?
Yes.
Confluence Park thoughts?
Exactly. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, we can move to the consent agenda. One of the items on the consent agenda is minutes and a parliamentary issue related to the minutes from June 28th, 2023. And we are going to pull that off the agenda for tonight, move it to our next meeting to give us time to do some research before we take action on it. With that, is there a motion on the consent agenda?
I move the consent agenda.
Is there a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Next up, appointments to the homelessness task force and the complete streets committee. And I believe we have the same person applying for both of those. Nolan, thanks for coming in. If you want to step up and just introduce yourself to the council, I know you've been here before, but.
Thank you, Mayor. Allow me to introduce myself again. My name's Nolan Carver. I reside in Ward One, the Hubbard Meadows neighborhood with my mother and a special needs man on Winter Street. I've been in the process of recovery and over the last few years, and I've been making great strides and bounds, thanks in part to the opportunity to serve on the Conservation Commission. It's been over a year and we've seen two floods. And what a great time to get involved. We're in this homelessness pandemic and a heroin pandemic, and the streets are, as Steve mentioned, changing as well. And so I'm just looking to sort of get involved more and sort of see where I can help find these dynamic solutions for these very interesting times. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? I always appreciate the efforts that people put into as volunteers on our boards and commissions. Is there a motion?
I move we appoint Nolan Carver to the homelessness task force and the complete streets committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. More, I hope you have the energy to do all of this. Yeah. Item eight, FEMA process overview from Guide House.
Kelly Murphy, Assistant City Manager. Thank you, Steve. I'll try to adjust the volume a little bit here for you. Kelly Murphy, Assistant City Manager. I'm here with Thad Lugamores, who is a Guide House representative. He works with the state for FEMA consulting and VEM, Vermont Emergency Management. I'm going to just tee things up for you and provide a brief introduction of where we are currently with recovery from the July 2023 event. And then Thad is going to take some questions from you related to the process and where we're going. So what I prepared is just a couple of brief talking points that I wanted to kind of get in front of you so you could kind of be thinking about where we are. So the damaged inventory list that we submitted to FEMA has 44 projects. Of those 44 projects, 15 have been submitted for obligation and funding. So we are getting funds from those. We have received 135,000 or so so far of those 15 projects. They total about $910,000. And so that's just to kind of give you a scale of order and magnitude in terms of where we are with projects and what's been funded so far. The total project list, those 44 projects, is about $11 million. The other thing that I wanted to kind of get in front of you is where we stand with the fund split. So the federal, state, local cost share. It is likely that we will be getting notice that we will be going to a 90-10 fund split. We have not officially received that notice. So at this point, it's a 25-75, so federal, 25 state or local. And so, you know, how that breaks down is we've got the 75%, which is the federal share, and that comes to about 800 or 8.3 million. And then from there, we get into the state and local share. And so the ERAF funding coming from the state is about 17.5% that we'll be getting. And so that breaks down to about 1.9 million. And then the balance is about a million dollars or so is what we'd be on the hook for if we were at the 7.5%. It's likely that that'll be decreased based on the federal share, but even if we came in at, say, 3%, we'd be at $330,000 on our local share. So I just wanted to give you a sense of the size and scale of what we're dealing with for, you know, our share of recovery. And then just a bit about where we are. So the projects that I noted are really preventative emergency services that we've been reimbursed for so far. There are some projects that are on the smaller end of things, such as like parking meters and trash receptacles. And so there's still a lot to come our way, but it's been sort of a trickle. So as you recall, it's about 135,000 that we've received. So we're still working on that. The other thing that I wanted to kind of note is we brought in June an amendment to the Stevens and Associates contract, which is teeing us up to get to the next phase of the project. We have completed the programmatic study of this building and will be starting to move on to the schematic review, which will then provide us with just the real costs of what it'll cost to replace items within the buildings, which is the largest part of that $11 million project figure that we've got for all the projects. And then the other thing that I want to note is that we are on the clock for permanent projects. There's an 18-month window from the date of the event. So that would put us at January 10th. So what we're doing is we're kind of marching towards that deadline with the Stevens and Associates work so that we can be ready to move ahead and likely seeking an alternative procedures project, which would be based on cost estimates for reimbursement. So I know that's a lot. I'm happy to provide these talking points by email so that you have them, but I just wanted to kind of tee up kind of the lay of the land where we are today and then have Thad get into kind of the program overview and where we're going. So I'm going to hand it over right now.
Thanks, Kelly. Yeah, hello again. My name is Thad Lugamores. I'm here, I technically work for Vermont Emergency Management, kind of a free agent in this world at this point. I've been doing it almost 20 years. I was here for Irene. I worked for the state of Massachusetts under the Baker administration for four years. And then when this event occurred, unfortunately, it was sort of a no-brainer to come back and help the state and be part of the Guide House team. So I've been doing this a long time and, you know, I appreciate what you guys are going through. And the other thing I'll say is, you know, part of my role here is helping, you know, key applicants in the state, you know, and the team that you have here, you know, and Zach and Sarah and Kelly have been like our top in the state in working with FEMA, being prepared and frankly, you know, standing their grounds where they need to and being part of the process and really taking control. So, you know, you're in good hands there. They got on everything early. You know, we were there giving advice, but they took it. And in my experience really with this world of, that you're about to get into with these key buildings, started in Waterbury with the Waterbury State Office complex that we mitigated and, you know, did the things that you now see, which is totally change it and reuse it and repurpose it. So the way that this program works as it relates to these buildings is, you know, the PA grant is different than any other grant that you really have. And, you know, I'd like to make a joke here, but it's true, right? PA is the only grant where, you know, it's Tuesday, you went to sleep and it was raining. Wednesday, you woke up and you had grants that you never wanted, right? That's how PA works. And you're eligible for those repairs and mitigation and other things as long as you can document that you're eligible, right? It's not like where there's a finite amount of money, like other grants work and you just apply and they cut it off, right? So.
And just to clarify for people who don't live with this every day, PA is public assistance.
FEMA public assistance.
That's for assistance to municipalities.
Yeah, basically, I should, I should back up. Public assistance program is the, that's what we, that's the program that funds all uninsured municipal losses based on categories of work, right? Your emergency work, your debris, your police and fire overtime, then your permanent repairs in these different categories. The one I'm talking about is category E, which happens to be buildings, which is your key category here, right? So sorry, you're right, I should have slowed down there a bit. But the way the grant works is once you have a declared disaster, you know, and there's a whole menu for how that works, you're going to get the next one here in a few days, right? But once that occurs, you're eligible for those things. So by nature, the program is designed to go out and carefully document all that, right? To make sure you are eligible, right? My first disaster was, you know, Katrina in New York. You know, I think of all the, half those people are in prison now, right? That's just, they look out that kind of thing through this process. So it's meticulous, but you guys are in the right place. But the way it works with these buildings basically is first they establish what it would cost to put it back exactly the way it was. Now, you can't do that because your codes and standards won't let you do that. But you need to, they look at that number because it sets the bar for certain things in the program, what you, what they will give you in mitigation additional. The real thing that you're, where your designers now are making their preparations to make their submission to FEMA is what would it cost within reasonable engineering, you know, estimating to put the buildings back to where they have to be to meet the current codes and standards, which in this case is your own flood code, right? They have to elevate the utilities, right? So because that is in your code, that because something that FEMA then the program will pay for, I use this example. If you had a school built for 50 children in 1950 and you're still using it for 50 kids today and a tornado wipes it off the map, the school you built today is going to look a lot different, right? Because of ADA and all, it's the same thing for flood code. Once codes are triggered, FEMA just has to pay for those repairs, right? So right now, we're in the process of building that because you say to FEMA, this is what it would cost to meet these codes. And this is some other ideas that we have to further flood proof, which you could do. But then that's the point where Kelly talked about, where you say, hey FEMA, here's, you know, based on your program, everything that, you know, we feel you would put back into these buildings to fix them where they sit. Okay, we'd rather take that money and do something else with it. That becomes the capped project that we spoke of, and that was Waterbury, and that was the first one in the country. You say, all right, so that funding, and then it just becomes a funding source, right? So you know, all right, our FEMA funding sources, you know, whatever, 38 million. Our big grant plan, you know, is 48 million. There's a delta there. Then it becomes something, or you just go with repairing as is because that is baseline, that's what you got FEMA program will provide, right? To put you back in those buildings with their old form and function to meet the current codes and standards, plus mitigation. You know, you could do additional things that the codes and standards didn't require. You know, I'm just making this up. I don't know that it would work, but, you know, higher floodgates or, you know, the mythical flood wall, right? No one would do a flood wall, but that would be like additional mitigation that no code or standard would require. So that's kind of where, and you guys are in a good place. And you're part of the complex project group that we have with FEMA. You know, these projects are all, you know, we're thinking that they're all going to work themselves through this process through this late summer and early fall. So that's kind of in nutshell where you are from my perspective. You're in a good place within the process. So I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Folks, any questions? Tim, go ahead.
I'm Tim. Quick questions. Just the whole FEMA thing and watching the news like we all do. It's like there's disasters everywhere. From your experience, what's the likelihood that this is going to be funded?
Oh, it's, so it will be funded, right? Because it is, first of all, it's the Stafford Act, right? Robert T. Stafford from Vermont, right, was the Stafford Act founder. So it's just, it has to be funded, but it has, it takes an act of Congress. So the DRAF, the Disaster Recovery Fund, will get low and it'll get to a point where they start to slow down funding because they need to replenish it. And actually, we're in there now, you know, they're only, they're only like letting out money for emergency projects. But as soon as Congress gets together, they'll put money back in it. And I'll tell you this, it's never a problem because, you know, if it's red states this year, it's blue states next year. You know, they always put money in the DRAF. It doesn't really come down to that unless it gets tangled up with some other legislation. But the money going into the DRAF is never an issue. So it's not a competitive grant in that sense, right? Where you're competing against others to get the money, right?
And then timing would be my other question in terms of what's a realistic expectation to show me the money kind of thing.
Current, you know, the current temporary funding freeze aside, you know, you're in the process right now where I would say, you know, you make this submission, you're going to make this request to FEMA for this capped project. I would say that you'll have a decision point, a knowledge point of what you think that funding is going to look like, you know, around the holidays is what we're shooting for through your engineer. And then a funding, you know, what would finally be obligated and, you know, sign on the dotted line, you're probably looking at, you know, into late next spring. Just the way they, I mean, because, and Sarah and the team will tell you, there's a whole methodical FEMA process that we have to get through that we've been struggling with for many reasons. We'll just say that it's still moving itself along and, you know, despite anything else, it'll take us long to get these projects obligated. I mean, the state FEMA, they're all, you know, sort of, there's a lot of projects. So I don't think you're, there's no check that's going to come by Christmas. Not for that one, for the other ones.
I'd say third and last question would be, I know there's at least one homeowner here whose home was wiped out by the flood and is applied. So, I mean, we've talked about the public assistance part for public infrastructure, but how about individuals who had significant losses?
Well, so loosely speaking, you know, the individual assistance program that they go to where FEMA is handing out immediate funding, right? That's where that, right? I said pipe, right? So that being said, if you're talking, then you get into the other grants that are more in my world that are buyouts and elevations, right? And those are technically mitigation grants that take time to develop. Some of those are starting to get approved from the 2023 event. But those usually, you know, they'll become, I would expect you'll start to see buyouts going through and, you know, started to be funding as early as the end of this next year, and then it'll pick up steam as, you know, they start to get rolling. That's, buyouts and elevations technically aren't assistance grants, they're mitigation grants, right? The individual assistance piece of where people have to go apply directly to FEMA, I can't speak very directly to that. Someone in the audience apparently can better than I.
All right, thanks, Steve. And following up on what you were talking about with Tim, what is, as the process goes through, what's the next event and what should we be expecting to happen next?
So I would, so I would expect the next thing is as your engineer, that, you know, the last effort was to get your engineer to get you this solid number on what it would take to meet your code to put the buildings back, you know, where they are, to meet what you need to do to meet your own code and maybe add some mitigation within the next, that would be month or two, he's going to come back. And then I think that's sort of a period internally where you could start to chew on, all right, this is kind of that. period internally where you could start to chew on, all right, this is kind of that number we're hovering around. Right? Whether it's um, to take that number and cap it, or is that gonna be really what it costs to do these things, you know, to really get us back in there? And that's a start. So I'm thinking that report will be your first indication. Then you're gonna make the submission to FEMA. They're gonna react to that probably if we get it early sometime around Christmas or around the first year. And then I think that's a much more concrete. This is what we're looking at being obligated to have a decision, you know, real concrete. Do we go back? Or do we look for the funding to go elsewhere? You know, our goal is to get most applicants, including the state and B G S to that point, you know, by the end of the year.
Anybody else? Any questions? All right. Thanks a lot. Oh, Nolan.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to make your acquaintance. Uh, my name's Nolan Carver. I serve on the Conservation Commission. Um, so I'm still new to um, sort of how uh, Montpelier is sort of um, evolving to these times. Uh, like I was saying earlier, I live in an ancient flood plain and we're the oldest family in town, basically. And my ancestors survived the twenty-seven flood, which took out uh, my neighborhood and much of this uh, flood plain. I'm just curious, um, can you speak to um any of um, suggestions for as far as you mentioned um elevations or flood wall? Um, also, um, is there such thing as a preemptive buyout uh, for my mother's house?
There is a program, there are both those programs. I'd be happy to speak to you outside if you like, but.
Thank you so much. Yeah, thank you.
Great. Thanks a lot for being here. Yeah, Lisa. Before you go, don't go yet.
I'm Lisa Edson of uh, my boys and I live in one of the houses that were flooded in July that was flooded. I'm glad you think we're in a really good place. I'm glad there's all this coverage for uninsured situations. We're insured. We've received nothing. We have received no immediate assistance. It's been more than a year. We don't have anything in place at all. There isn't an R F P out. There isn't money available to us. We are not allowed to rebuild ourselves. How can we sit here a year later, more than that? The businesses are up and running who weren't insured. Money's going out for businesses. Money's going out from municipalities, and those of us living in it are receiving no assistance, no support, no anything. You're not even looking at me. My boys and I live in this every single day and there's nothing happening. And I keep hearing how there's swift money coming. How the legislature moved to get us money quickly that was authorized in June and still isn't available. We're hearing from contractors, they're scheduling two years out and we're still not scheduling. And we live in a house with no walls and no kitchen and no bathroom. We're losing our money off our apartment every month for more than a year. That's a two-bedroom unit in Montpelier, ready for people to live in that could be used right now that can't be because of this. And yet you stand here and say we're in a great position. We're supporting the uninsured. What is going on here? Why aren't things moving forward? How is it that I send notes that I never get replies to at all? So I'm back here again. I know that y'all love when I show up. I love when I show up too. This is how I wanna spend my evening, and I'm certain how you all do. Um, but this is insane. And the fact that none of it's moving forward and we're getting left out because there aren't very many of us. And so we're just getting tossed to the side. How is this possible? We had insurance. I haven't, every day I pay for my insurance that they've already told me they won't pay anything on for the last year while I pay it because they've already issued half the payment. And I have nothing. My boys have nothing. And there's nothing happening. And Vermont Emergency Management is telling us we're in a great position and that we're ahead. Explain that to me.
Specifically, uh, vendor for the state of Vermont Emergency Management came here to speak about the public assistance program, which is a program that deals specifically with the municipal projects. So what you're talking about is sort of outside of my scope. I'm not here to discuss that. And I don't speak for Vermont Emergency Management on that point.
Yeah, we're out of, so I, from that point. Everyone's scope. Everyone tells me how it's not their fault and that somebody else is responsible. I have insurance. I'm still paying on it.
Thanks, Lisa. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, John Copans. Montpelier Commission on Recovery and Resilience Update.
Uh, thank, thank you so much, Mayor, uh, for the invitation to be here tonight.
Thanks for.
So uh, just a quick a quick reminder, I don't think I probably need to give this, but the commission uh, emerged out of last summer's floods and a series of community forums that took place over the course of the summer last year. Uh, fifteen volunteers stepped forward to serve on the commission and I was hired in the springtime. My last time with you was soon after getting hired uh, i- in the spring. Um. We have three buckets of work, uh, just in terms of categories of focus that really were defined by the community as a whole. And I'll sort of start at the broadest scope, which is really thinking about things at a watershed level. We really uh our our destiny in Montpelier is set well before the water arrives, crosses into our borders and and so we uh, we have a sense that we really have to work with communities uh, up and down the watershed to really collaborate together. We're working on building those relationships and connections and facilitating those conversations. Uh, second, we're thinking about an adaptive downtown. Uh, the the sad reality is we have a a sense that we're gonna flood again. It's it's going to happen and we need to strengthen our infrastructure such that we can really minimize our losses and weather that next storm as best as possible. That means working with individual building owners and generally with the with our with our downtown infrastructure, the most flood prone areas in in the city to really uh, make them more more resilient to future future flooding events. And then finally, we're working uh, on uh, a more robust and inclusive emergency response plan as well. Uh, I wanna just start with some appreciation uh, for for a couple of things that we uh first, uh, as I think you all know, the city of Barry and Montpelier collaborated on an EPA Community Change Grant. Uh, I know that took a lot of work, want to acknowledge specifically Josh Jerome, who spent a lot of time on on that. That proposal includes a significant amount of funding for District Heat, which is a resilience system. So kudos on that, but it also includes uh, uh, the potential for this downtown building survey that we are proposing to do where we will work with property owners to really assess those buildings and come up with uh, some recommendations for how best they can flood proof flood proof those buildings. So really wanna thank the city for their work with the city of Barry and the State Recovery Officer on that EPA Community Change Grant. I also just wanna say that our level of collaboration with the city has just has been excellent. Uh, soon after I started in the role, the city manager had me into a leadership meeting with uh, with all of the department heads. I really appreciated that opportunity to connect with the team. Uh, I connect with Josh and other members of the staff very consistently and um the the sense of collaboration is really excellent. So just just really wanna say thank you to uh, all of you. And that really includes you as a council as well. I've appreciated connecting with you as as individuals also. So now let me get to a couple of specific projects uh, that we're we're working on. Um. We've talked about it before, but there is a parcel of land called Five Home Farm Way over by the Roundabout and Agway. Um, at this point, that parcel is really controlled by Preservation Trust Vermont. Eventually, the idea is that that parcel's ownership will be transferred to the city of Montpelier. There's some work being done around how to make that transfer happen. But in the meantime, uh, S L R Consulting and a gentleman named Roy Schiff, who I'll probably mention a couple of times tonight. He's a Montpelierite and he's a real expert in terms of uh, doing this uh, work around hydrology and um, and waterways. Roy has been hired by Preservation Trust to develop a site plan for Five Home Farm Way, essentially to return that to flood plain to remove, likely to remove a fair amount of material from that site so that it becomes a place where water can really expand and slow down before it reaches the city of Montpelier. It's exactly the kind of project that we're looking for throughout the watershed, but I'd say it's particularly important because of its proximity to our town. You know, we had the chance to walk the site a few weeks ago and it actually was pretty interesting to get to see that point where the Stevens Branch and uh, the main branch of the Winuski come together. I'd never actually laid eyes on it because you can't really see it when you drive by in either direction. But it but it gives you a sense of of possibility at that site. Uh. The building on site will be deconstructed next spring and the hope is that that project will actually proceed next summer. So that uh, we're feeling encouraged by that. And that actually brings me to my next uh, thing I.
John, that that deconstruction includes the foundation and everything.
You know, that's a good question. I actually don't don't know the answer to that. I'm a, I don't know. Does anybody? Yeah. I can follow up with you on that for sure. I will say, rather than demolition, they are deconstructing uh, in part because there's stuff that they can salvage from that. So I was, I think, encouraged here that. So. To transition to another part of our work as a commission, there is a statewide program that I I think you're all aware of called the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. It uh, there is ninety million dollars in that uh, fund. That's a mix of mostly federal dollars, but some state dollars. Uh, usually that is a program where there is a required local match for those H M G P projects. But in this instance, the the legislature and the the administration decided that they would cover the local match for these H M G P projects. And not only did they do that, but they also have hot, Vermont Emergency Management has hired uh, consulting firms to help really develop those projects because it's a lot of work, a lot of technical work to do the benefit cost analysis. Uh, again, it's this gentleman Roy Schiff who's been hired to do this work for for Montpelier, for Berlin and Barry, because that's one of the focus areas for this H M G P grant program. Uh, the city, of course, has an active interest in what projects are on that list. There will be city-specific projects, things like the wastewater treatment facility, things like what's called the Dicky Dam up uh, up in Berlin uh, at the water, uh, at the at the water facility up there. I'm not saying it right. It's not the treatment facility, but the um the drinking water facility up up in Berlin. And uh, for us as a commission, the reason that we're engaged is we wanna be sure that pro- there are projects that uh, are impactful in terms of reducing flood elevation uh, here here in Montpelier. And so in fact, we are in communication with C V R P C, who is helping to coordinate this through something called the River Program in with the consultant to really um, I would say elevate, and I know that word is a little bit fraught, but to elevate certain projects that we think should stay on the list for evaluation. And those are sort of bigger and more ambitious projects. Things like uh, looking at the Bailey Street Dam and the Railroad Bridge. Or not dam, excuse me. There is a Bailey Dam. I I meant the Bailey Street Ridge and the Railroad Bridge, because those are really identified as pinch points. Also taking a look at the confluence of the Dog River and uh, the Winuski down uh, at that section because again, there is a lack of flood plain down there and the sense is that the water backs up from there as well. And then finally, uh, we also have a sense that there there should be sort of a citywide hydrologic and hydraulic study of how the water moves through Montpelier because that sort of system-wide study could be uh, very helpful as we try to identify future projects that'll be impactful here in the city.
John, this may be beyond your expertise, but I noted that some of the correspondence we received today regarding Confluence Park mentioned the Dog River Field and that being flooded and whether that plays a role. It just makes me wonder, does that play a a role in in all of this?
You know, I don't wanna get out beyond my skis as as some would say in terms of being an expert on that stuff. I do have some sense that there's clearly interplay, right? It's a system. And to be honest, like when I first came into this role, I was surprised to hear that something down where the Dog River comes in actually mattered because I think of that as downstream. Oh, that doesn't matter. But the reality is when those pinch points are in close enough proximity to our downtown, it it really, it really does make a difference in terms of the water backing up. Similarly, when we have the North Branch coming in to the Winuski, that's another place where things back up, right? There's not actually a ton of water coming in through the North Branch, but because it backs up, it really creates creates an issue for them. So so you know, um, what I would say in terms of bringing this to a close in terms of the H M G P projects, eventually I think you as a council will probably be brought a list that you will uh sign off on as a council. I actually am uncertain about whether the things that I've mentioned will be on that list because frankly, I think they need some more research. We need to figure out if they're feasible. What does the timeline look like? But for us, we think it's really important to continue to do that evaluation while we have the services of these experts from S L R Consulting. We really wanna be sure we're thinking broadly about the possibilities uh, in terms of what those projects could look like. And I would, I would also note that it is also and and I'll give a nod to uh, Councilmember Hurl, who's who's a a member of the commission as well, who has really made this point. The Hazard Mitigation Grant Program is not the only potential source of funding when it comes to these projects. Often, there are also water quality benefits for flood plain restorations or dam removals. And so uh, it's not like we're only gonna get one bite at the apple, but we do as a commission feel like it's really important to keep some of these bigger, more ambitious projects uh, on on the list, at least for now until um, until we figure out that maybe they don't make sense for this this current round.
All right, thanks, John.
I've got one more.
Okay, sorry. But I don't wanna cut you off prematurely.
Well, but um, I wanted to pause to see if there's other questions around that before I talk a little bit about our emergency uh, response plan work. All right. Uh, the last thing I just wanna update folks on is that we are very busy at work on something called the Montpelier Action Plan for Local Emergency or Maple, uh, as we call it. Um. We have had a number of meetings with city staff. We've had a number of meetings with other stakeholders in in really trying to develop the scope of what that plan looks like. And to be clear, it is not just a plan for municipal operations in times of emergency. It's really intended to be a community-based plan because the reality is we all act as a community when we're in these times of of crisis. And that's both in the preparing this phase, in the response phase, and in the recovery pha- phase. And we we feel like having a stronger sense of who does what is really critical. Uh, we have just in the last week or so transmitted essentially a gap analysis and set of recommendations as a draft to the city manager, and that is being circulated among city staff. And concurrently, our consultant, we're working with a consultant on this. Our consultant is working on the first steps of drafting the actual plan. It's our expectation that we will have a draft plan ready for the community in September and that we'll have a public forum at the end of September, early October, uh, for the community to really look at and evaluate that plan, provide us with feedback. And then there will be a, and also again, for the city to have that opportunity and and city staff. And then the ideas will come back with a proposed plan to you as a council, because ultimately that'll be a plan that uh, ideally this, the council adopts for the city and really for the community as a whole.
All right, now, anyone have questions?
So, uh, thank you, John. A great update. Um. There there's a lot more I'd like to know, but uh, I'm curious about the the watershed work, which is which is a giant project, but particularly the the hydrology study you mentioned of how water moves through the Zidibon Pier. I feel like the council has decisions coming up over the next year that it all depends on what the what the river does, you know, um, how the river wants to flow and what we do about that. Um. What's the anticipated timeline on that giant watershed project?
You know, it's, it's real, it's in conception phase at this point, so I can't give you some specifics. I'll actually give a little, uh, shout out to Stephen Whitaker. He pointed me towards a, um, webinar that I did have a chance to participate in recently where they use LiDAR technology in the city of Lindenville because Lindenville has had persistent fu- funding flooding issues. And that LiDAR really provides a level of detail that is impossible to create in a, in another way. And so it's really use of those kinds of technology that I think when you couple that with consultants who have expertise, you can come up with much, much more precise sort of senses of what's likely to happen. And then recommended efforts, uh, to address, uh, address those.
Yeah. Well, yeah, good. I mean, it's great that, that, I mean, there will be technology that'll help, you know, make that move faster, I hope. But it's good to know that we're on the track to sort of nail that stuff down. Because there's a lot of, a lot of decisions that sort of depend on, you know, there's a, um, a, a, an order, a sequence that has to be, has to be followed. So appreciate, appreciate the comments. Thank you.
Yeah, we're, we're sensitive to that sequence when we think about Five Home Farm Way because in fact, as an example, there are other parcels adjacent that also may well have some floodplain opportunities. For example, the Agency of Transportation's garage is right next door. And they are looking at sort of essentially depopulating that facility and tearing down that facility. So when we think about how we design the project at Five Home Farm Way, one of the things we said to the consultant is be sure you're doing that with anticipation that that other project is actually going to happen so that it all fits together as a whole as opposed to a, as individual.
Yeah, exactly the kind of thing I'm thinking about, yeah.
Thank you, John. This is really helpful. Um, you talked about the three buckets that you had and one of them was about, um, tried to write down what you said, but about adaptive downtown and about, you know, recognizing that we're going to have a flood again and what's going to happen. And, and I heard you making reference to businesses and helping kind of support what's happening with the downtown businesses. But I wonder if that was just what you, the, the wording that you happen to use right now, or if you're really looking at a more inclusive building residential and everything.
To be clear, what we have focused on is sort of the hundred structures that are in our downtown that were flooding impacted. So that certainly is beyond just businesses. It's in, it's residences. It is, uh, a, a whole host of organizations. It's government buildings as well. So thank you for making that clarification.
Anything else from members of the council? Lauren?
Thanks, John. Um, just wondering if you could for a minute, uh, just the other area of work, the River's Edge Master Plan. Just because the next topic on our agenda, Confluence Park, it would just be helpful to give kind of a snapshot of the latest thinking there.
Yeah, it's, um, I'm building sort of ta- task forces to do that work and, and that just to zoom out. Uh, one of the priorities for the commission is to really look at that River's Edge as, uh, uh, throughout Montpelier and to think holistically about what we're doing with that, uh, River's Edge, uh, and how, what the appropriate ways to develop that are. And, and, uh, the sense is we've done a fair amount of planning as a community, but we haven't ever done anything specific to the River's Edge. And given what we've gone through with recent flooding events, that there is real, real good reason to do that as, as an important exercise. And so we are, in fact, I just had a conversation with somebody at the state who suggested a potential funding source for that project. And I'm in the process of forming a team that will help carry that forward. You know, included on that team ideally is, uh, somebody from the State, uh, Department of Building and General Services, because so much of that riverfrontage is controlled by the state. So they are really a critical partner. We're also talking to the Capital Complex Commission. I spoke to your, uh, Director of Planning, Mike Miller, about this project as well. So we're, we're really sort of building that team. But the sense is we really, uh, want to think holistically about that entire, entire, uh, riverfront. Yeah.
Anything else from members of the council? Any questions or comments from members of the public? Nolan, I see. Go ahead, Steve.
I'm, I'm, want to just raise a couple of issues. Steve Whitaker, Montpelier, um, this, the ca- the commission is not a government-created entity, to my understanding. Uh, it's not subject to public records law. And in effect, we're wrestling with an issue or dancing around an issue of whose responsibility is it to write Montpelier's uh, emergency preparedness and response plan? And I would argue those are clearly government functions. I don't object, and I think it would be prudent to contract with the commission for that piece. But I think the responsibility and the, uh, obligation to assure its thoroughness and to possibly create a cost-sharing structure with our neighbor towns, because this is a watershed. Uh, this is not something that is typically done by a nonprofit on their own initiative and, and we get the result. This is a government function and I don't want to see us make the same mistakes we've made with Good Samaritan. Uh, so I, I want to drive that point home. Uh, to address Carrie's question, and I had spoken to John and Christian about this. The identifying the critical flood level and the, using that LiDAR measurement, which can be both done in the water, measuring the shape of the riverbed and the capacity of the riverbed, as well as, uh, the lowlands and flooding flood zones. Uh, we can prioritize and plan for which buildings are going to get hit in which sequence and channel our response for sandbags and mitigation and pumps in that way by doing it very, uh, consciously through pre-planning. And so that, that I think, uh, might speak to your concern, but I, I'd ask you to give some real thought to providing necessary funding, but being very clear on whose role and whose obligation and who's in transparency. I am going to find out how much they're paying him. It's just a matter of time.
Thanks, Steve. Nolan?
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, John. It's me, Nolan Carver. Um, so, excuse me, um, I serve on the Conservation Commission. And, um, I just wanted to point out the fact that you had mentioned, um, we're demolishing, um, that historic house over by Ague. Is that what you said earlier? Yeah, we're deconstructing. Um, and in that same sense, we're deconstructing history. Are you familiar with the history of that house? It goes back to the founding father of Montpelier. Apparently that belonged to, uh, the namesake, um, Colonel Jacob Davis. Um, I just wanted to mention that there are real people, you know, with real problems. It's just that it's a cultural heirloom. It's hard to say goodbye to like an old rocking chair. Um, it, it, it pains me to see that place go. Uh, perhaps I can paint a portrait and, 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 and hang it on a wall. Uh, but honestly, I almost wish that we could pick the thing up and, and put it in Shelburne Museum. Um, so thank you for your, your support. I look forward to working with you and seeing you around town more often.
Thanks, Nolan. Okay. Thanks a lot, John.
Thank you.
Next up, we're at Confluence Park. And while we're getting setting up, I'll, getting set up, I'll just mention that, uh, we've, we've received a lot of emails on this topic on, on both sides of the, uh, of the issue. And any, any of the emails that, uh, have just come to me directly or to, or, or just to the council members, I've also forwarded to the city manager. So those could all be, uh, kept together and, uh, be part of the public record for this. And, uh, I appreciate everyone's thoughts on this. I know that there are equally strongly held positions on bo- both sides. Well, uh, why don't you just turn it off? While she's setting up, I will just tee this up a little bit. In February of, uh, twenty-three, this project was brought to the city council, proposed with a budget and funding. And at that point, obviously the city council made a decision that it would not commit any more than the city's already approved amount of money, uh, of six hundred thousand dollars and gave the, the project people eighteen months to secure the remaining funding. So that eighteen months, uh, expired earlier this month in August. And so that's, uh, it, it's proper timing for the, the group proposing the project to come back and give you an update on the the project and the, where they stand with, uh, the status of funding. And then I think your choices are to decide, as I understand it, they don't have the full funding, but Kasha, well, I don't want to steal her thunder. Will, will give us a presentation and you would decide whether you wanted to continue to provide more time or end the project now, or however you wanted to proceed with this. So that's what's before us to meet.
Thanks, Phil.
Thanks, Phil.
Thanks, Kasha.
Uh, my name is Kasha Ranjo and I am one of the co-directors of Vermont River Conservancy. Um, you just heard from the Commission on Flood Recovery and Resilience. And, um, as John mentioned, they've developed five top priorities and one of which is a River's Edge Master Plan. And that is specifically to identify opportunities for increasing green resilient infrastructure and public access to and connection with rivers. This aligns with what I hear in our community, uh, whether it's in the post-flood forums around town and casual conversations. I've heard over and over again, and I know you have too, we need green flood resilient infrastructure along our riverfront. This brings us to Confluence River Park, which is green flood resilient infrastructure that's designed and ready to be built. Resilience is core to our work at Vermont River Conservancy and projects underway across the watershed, some of which John shared. And this is where Confluence River Park fits into the overall puzzle. Um, upstream of downtown, um, in Worcester, last year, a floodplain that my organization worked to protect, uh, the floodwaters rose several feet across these protected wetlands. And that single project kept inches of rain outside of Wrightsville Reservoir. And y'all remember that the reservoir was one inch from overtopping at Spillway. And so we're actively looking at, uh, more of these types of projects in Worcester and Plainfield and Berlin, all projects that would keep Montpelier safer during floods. There are floodplain restoration projects underway at Home Farm Way that John just talked about. Um, Friends of the Winuski is working on multiple dam removals in Barry. And for us in two thousand and twenty-one, couple of years before our community flooded, Vermont River Conservancy sent things in motion to look at removing four local dams. One of these, the Bailey Dam near Shaw's is rising to the top of the list of likely FEMA projects. Um, also John just mentioned. And because we were ahead of the game before the flooding, the design for that project is underway. It's happening now. A year from now, designs will be complete for removal of the Bailey Dam. And it, because it's rising to the top of this FEMA project list at well, as well, it could well have funding for removal by two thousand and twenty-six. And this is important because this is the same timeline as Confluence River Park. So the trucks mobilized to get onsite for dam removal could also do excavation for Confluence. And the truck, uh, uh, this would be potentially a huge cost savings that would make the most of every dollar invested in both of the projects and an end result of side-by-side flood mitigation and flood resilience right in the heart of downtown. Together, these types of projects are doing as much as possible to create a more natural river with space to slow and store floodwater. Confluence River Park will all, give all of us a place where, and a city that's filled with rivers and bridges, people can finally actually get to the newly restored river to enjoy a cup of coffee with friends, cast a line, take a paddleboard out on their lunch break, all via design that strengthens the banks of the river to hold up during intense flooding. And here's how close we are to making this a reality. We've raised forty-three percent of the dollars needed to move to construction. No, we are not a hundred percent of the way there, but we're forty-three percent of the way there. And if any of you have ever been involved with fundraising, you know that the first forty percent is the hardest to raise, the next thirty percent is easier, the final thir- thirty percent easier still, and there's a rule of momentum in fundraising and we have momentum. I've been working hard to wrangle opportunities and creatively thinking about what I can do to bring outside dollars and investment into our town. And there are some big new opportunities coming up that weren't possible a year ago. So one of these is EPA Brownfields Funding. A year ago, the same grant opportunity have had a five hundred thousand dollar cap and it required a significant m- match, which made it out of reach and not attainable for this. New this year, we can apply for a million dollars or more and there's no match required. I took the head of EPA's Northeast Region and the Vermont Lead on a walking tour of our riverfront. I showed them Confluence River Park and they were excited about the vision. I asked how they prioritize their funding and their response, they said it's based on community priorities. And it's, if it's a clear community priority, they want to make it happen. This is where the city's bond commitment is crucial. It's a financial benef- investment that demonstrates community commitment. And while this grant doesn't require a match, the city's bond commitment is a key way to demonstrate commitment and competitively bring these outside dollars into Montpelier. Another on the list here is the Land and Water Conservation Fund. These are federal dollars administered by each state. Vermont hasn't had an LWCF grant proposal for at least three to four years. They haven't administered these federal dollar grants. This summer, they finally put out materials in a timeline and we can apply again for up to one million dollars. This grant requires a fifty-fifty non-federal match, which is where the federal's bond commitment is cruc- crucial to maximize the dollars we can bring into our downtown infrastructure. Another one here on the fall twenty twenty-four opportunities is the Lake Champlain Basin Program. They have already invested two hundred thousand dollars into this park. They're excited to see it happen and they told me that they would be glad to see another proposal from us this fall and excited to commit more funding to this project. Together, these three grants, all newly available this fall, can bring more than one point six million dollars in outside funding into our downtown. We're very close to making the community's thirty-year vision a reality. So here's our request tonight. Retain the city's bond commitment to Confluence River Park, which is no cost to the city at this time, through the end of May two thousand and twenty-five, in order to demonstrate clear city commitment, build on initial momentum and bring outside investment into Montpelier's downtown. Most of you here have taken me up on my invitation to go walk along our riverfront. And here's what I heard from you. You want to see us transition our economy from being overly reliant on state employees who are never going to return to twenty twenty numbers, to a more resilient economy that leverages our recreation resources and outdoor amenities. Every riverfront park ever developed in this country has seen overwhelming economic returns. Burlington's lakefront generates ten thousand to forty thousand dollars for their city every day. You heard from Marty a year ago, who I met for the first time here in city council chambers on Zoom, as you did October of last year when I presented. And I don't know about you all, but I was blown away by his experience. His hometown in New Hampshire was a crumbling mill town with one restaurant. The community rallied together to transform its riverfront, opening a park similar to Confluence in two thousand and twenty-one. Now, just three years later, the Riverfront Park has catalyzed a newly thriving revitalized net downtown that supports nine restaurants. This is the generational investment in our community that can be se- central. This generational investment will be a central accessible place for people to enjoy, uh, eat, uh, lunch by the river, for people to enjoy, eat lunch by the river, cast a line, launch a boat, splash with kids, all opportunities to draw people into Montpelier and help revitalize our vibrant downtown. I heard for you all say that you want to see outside dollars invested in this community, generate grant support to multiply what we could achieve with city dollars alone. And this project brings more than two point four million dollars in outside investment into our community, adding more than four dollars for every dollar that we put in. And finally, I heard many of you say that you're frustrated by seeing this town plan and design and work towards good ideas that never come to fruition. We have the chance to do something different here. Plans are in hand and ready to go. I hope you'll choose to continue to commit to this park, and you choose to have a positive impact on our community for generations to come. Confluence River Park is designed and ready to go. It's a step in the right direction. And let's retain the state's bond commitment and take this step forward for community resilience. Thank you.
Thanks, Kasia. Council members, any questions or thoughts? I do expect to take comments and questions from the public also, of course. Lauren.
One question before hearing more from the public. Could you just describe, so of the committed funding so far, like, what are other like time limits on when decisions need to be made? Or does some of that start to go away? Like, what are the constraints around that that we should be aware of?
For the current.
For the current commitments, yeah.
Yeah, so of the current commitments, there is currently a LWCF grant of about three hundred thirty thousand dollars that the city has that has been extended in the past. The city that is through the end of December 2024 this year. We have the opportunity to extend that again. What we just learned last week is that this grant program is unique and that you can actually, they, the state has the choice to add dollars to a previous grant outside of a competitive process. So there's a competitive process this fall where we could apply to a new additional one million dollars. And/or we're meeting that Josh and I are meeting with them next week. They could add funds to our existing grant and extend the deadline. So that's one of them. Lake Champlain Basin Program has several years on it, and they're also fairly flexible. Vermont Out Arts Council expires the soonest. And then I think I'm less certain of the downtown transportation and clean water. Yeah.
Thanks. Okay, let's let's start taking comments from members of the public or if people in the room would like to be heard. Why don't you come on up here, see all your hand first?
Hello, Montpelier City Council. Thank you so much for that presentation, Kasia. I feel like you basically said everything, but I'm just gonna come up and discuss why I think the Confluence River Park is an important project for our town to take on.
And before you get going, could you tell us who you are?
Yeah, I'm Lena D'Onofrio. I'm a fellow Montpelier resident and a twelfth grader at Montpelier High School. I'm passionate about ecology, climate change, and our community's relationship and responsibility to the rivers and the natural world around us. Obviously, we all remember the historic flooding that shook our city last summer, whose echoes still rattle our infrastructure and collective psyche. Since then, we've had enough scares and close calls and watched enough neighbors be hit by yet another catastrophic flooding event to know that this wasn't just some coincidence. This is a real problem that is rising up towards us, and it's going to continue facing us. Now is the time to ask how we are going to face it back. What does moving forward look like? Right now, it's easy to feel like our rivers are nothing more than inconveniences or even enemies. In reality, rivers are an adaptable, fluid part of nature, and they only rise against us because we have channelized and altered them in such a way that today they cannot meander through robust wetlands or adapt to extreme weather like they are supposed to. When we try to suppress or ignore the rivers, they only surge up to slap us in the face later. So moving forward means prioritizing the rivers. It means implementing creative resilient solutions around interacting with them. It means embracing the idea that strengthening our rivers goes hand in hand with strengthening our connection to the rivers, and that doing so will strengthen our communities in turn. I believe that the Confluence River Park embodies these ideals, and that moving forward with it will help us achieve them. Firstly, the plan takes unused lots and turns them into green spaces, fostering ecosystems and native vegetation in these places. The soil there will have a higher capacity for storing and processing rainwater, and banks that are supported by strong ecosystems will better support our infrastructure and our rivers at the same time. Additionally, these green spaces will provide people with the chance to enjoy our rivers, allowing for recreation and positive interaction that will help dismantle some of the understandable stress and fear surrounding our rivers right now. If we implement ecologically sensitive flood-minded projects that benefit each other and our place, like the Confluence River Park, we turn the rivers into our friends, and we move toward a more resilient tomorrow. Thank you for listening and considering my input. I hope you all have a great night.
Thanks, Lena. Thanks for coming. I saw another hand, but I'm not sure who's. Steve.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'm Steve Cease. I live on North Street. Good evening, folks. I'm here actually to urge you to retract your commitment to the Confluence Park for a number of reasons, which I outlined in a letter to you that I sent you earlier this afternoon. I hope you've had a chance to read it. And I've got to say, it's no fun to stand up here and say, let's pull the funding for a project that means so much to so many people. That's basically a kind of a destructive act. But I but I do think under the circumstances the city is facing, it's an important idea, and I urge you to take that step. I outlined a number of reasons why I thought that it was important to take that step in my letter. And I don't want to repeat it verbatim or even go into too much detail. I will tell you that I've been a longtime paddler in the city. I've probably launched my kayak dozens of times down at the Interstate Overpass over the years. I've walked and run and biked through most of the parts of the city. And I think riverside recreation is a really important issue for the city. This is just not the time to do it. The city is facing other priorities we know are facing huge financial obligations between our infrastructure. We seem to have a water main bursting out of a street every week. We have flood protection and flood remediation. We've got the unbelievably huge task of confronting homelessness. And money is, on the other hand, is short. We're looking at a potential double-digit increase again on the education side of our tax bill this coming year. There's and we don't think there's going to be a lot more tax money available to meet some of these needs, or at least I don't think there will be. So it seems to me that almost every penny counts. And I think the money we've set aside for this project could be redirected to one of those other, I think, more pressing needs and priorities. I mentioned a few things in my in my letter that I just want to touch on briefly. We don't really know, and I was interested to hear Don Copans talk about a hydrologic study for the watershed basin. We don't know what's going to happen in years to come, except that it's going to be worse than things that we've seen already. At some point, Wrightsville is likely to overtap. We don't know what that will mean. We just don't know what will happen at the conjunction or confluence of the of the North Branch and the Winuski. But it's not going to be good. And among other things, it's likely to have impacts on this project. We don't know if this project will help or hurt or be neutral in the face of some of those big events. But we know that the project will be, will suffer. It'll be even in regular high-water events. It'll silt in high-water events, debris and silt and sedimentation will land there. Who's going to maintain this project in years to come? And does the city have the commitment, either in money or manpower, to take that task on? On that point, I noted that we already have several riverside properties in the city that, to my eye at least, have been ignored. One is the Dog River Recreation Park, which hosted probably two or three soccer pitches and two baseball fields. I was down the other day. The fields looked unplayable. There was actually standing water in the base path.
That's your time.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I haven't gotten started.
Well, it's a good thing you put it all in writing.
Okay, it's all in writing. May I just say one thing unrelated to my letter? There's a wonderful podcast by a Montpelier High School graduate named Emmett Fitzgerald, which is called, well, it's on Pacifica Radio. It's a part of a series called Ninety-Nine Percent Invisible. He did a specific part podcast about the flood in Montpelier. I really hope you can listen to it, and I'll try to send you a link tonight or tomorrow. It's a wonderful piece and very thought-provoking about the issues that are confronted the city. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Sorry to go on.
It's it's okay. There's a lot to this. Donna. Come on up, Donna. Donna, you're up.
Donna Bate, I live in Montpelier on North Franklin Street. And I've been a strong supporter of not only Confluence Park, but investing in the future. It's like a savings account. You have to keep putting money in, or you never get ahead. And I feel like the investments we've made in the past have paid off many times forward. And this money is set aside. We don't have a bond charging us interest. It's set aside with the authority to make the bond. And the new, everything you said is like, everybody is more aware that we need to put money in this. There's more grant possibilities now than eighteen months ago. So I would really not want to put the brakes on now. And Dog River is an example that we haven't invested in, that we've just taken it for granted. And so this is, Dog River is a model of what we shouldn't do because we've always been strapped with money, and so we just let it go by. So I encourage you to have a vision and to keep that money and give them more time. Thank you.
Thanks, Donna. Steve.
I'm just gonna split the baby between the last two. I think giving the project more time is reasonable. It is a nice vision. I imagine it may be ten years from now. I think it's absurd to create, be talking about or planning to create more park space when we can't maintain what we got. There's no bathroom facilities in this plan, and yet we can't even get the transit center bathrooms open. You know, we've got raw sewage entering right above this proposed location, combined sewer overflow. And until we get that in hand, I don't want to recommend or build infrastructure for people paddling in the river. I mean, I see kids swimming in that river, you know, and then a storm comes and raw sewage goes in the river. It's not, it's not well-integrated with what else we're wrestling with right now. I think that confirming this, I don't know if it's been engineered, but it's been planned conceptually. The engineering for this park after we get our dams removed is in order. I mean, like I said, I support the vision, maybe not so much concrete, and certainly address the public facilities, you know. Right now, it feels like another attempt to take away the Gerton Park, take away the, you know, the info booth, take away any place the homeless converge and pave it over with something where the homeless can't be. And this is where the homeless converge right now. So for lack of any better place, which is a whole nother topic that you need to deal with.
Thanks, Steve. Anybody, I don't see any other hands in the room. If anyone is watching online who would like to be heard, please raise your electronic hand or your physical hand. But electronically, I'm more likely to see you.
I just realized.
Oh, DeeDee.
I just realized the screen is stopped. Do you want me to swap to the people on the screen? Is that helpful for you?
Yeah, why don't you stop sharing? And DeeDee, you, I know you're here for this. You're muted, but you're, you'll be going to be unmuted just a second. Okay, you should be able to unmute yourself now, DeeDee.
Thank you. I'd like to thank you both, the city council and the other members of the committee, the Confluence Park Committee, et cetera. I am not convinced at all that the Confluence Park meets the needs and goals that they have projected. The community priority, I would question whether this is still a priority of the committee. Excuse me, the community. And I would ask that the city council and/or the Vermont River Conservancy double-check that because since they were first proposing this as a project, I suspect the priorities have shifted pretty considerably. We do not do a very good job because of resources and staffing of taking care of the public spaces we already have. Witness the roundabout, the city hall park, the transit center plantings, the bike path, all of which need considerable maintenance, none of which is happening, which suggests to me that we do not have what we need to take care of a whole nother city park, not the least of which is a park on a very, very steep slope, which probably means particular expertise. I also wonder whether the statement about this being a no cost to the city at this time is really true. We did vote for the six hundred thousand dollars, but if that is not approved by the city council to move forward, I wonder what happens next. It sounds to me as if the commitment means that the upfront costs will not be covered. So where does that go in the budget? And I don't think that our project really compares to other riverfront development projects because we have a river which feed, which is fed by the North Branch, creating pretty strict strategic, excuse me, strong currents. I don't think you can just let a kid out there for paddling. I don't think you can just paddleboard your boat and easily get back to the landing site. And finally, I am not at all convinced that this project is a river resilient and would withstand another six to nine feet of rise in the river flow from a flooding event. It does not look like that to me when I look at the drawings. So I am not at all in favor of the city council approving the six hundred thousand dollars to go forward. We have many, many, many other needs in this city which are much more urgent and much more pressing for humanity and for the lifeblood, lifeblood of the city. And I.
DeeDee, that is your time.
Consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us. Phil.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep.
My name is Phil Dodd. I should start by saying I'm very supportive of the River Conservancy's work to to create more floodplains. I appreciate the overall effort to take advantage of our river, but I just don't think the the cost, timing, or location of this project is appropriate. They were given eighteen months to raise its funds, and they're less than halfway there. The cost is now up to three million, and a lot has changed in the last eighteen months. We've had this flood, our city budget had to be cut to their bones. We're in tough financial shape. And as Steve mentioned, our homeless problem has worsened. I think we could use this money for other purposes, paving, water mains, other infrastructure. And I'm saying this in the context of the very high property taxes we already have. Our municipal taxes are among the highest in the state. Act one twenty-seven is going to be pushing up our school taxes for the next few years. The other part of this is the location just does not seem great to me. If you're sitting in this park, you'll see the back of Shaw's and the back of the Shell Station. It's in a difficult spot on the bike path. I mean, right now, I know parents who won't let their kids ride their bike down there because of, it's become a kind of a hangout spot. And I'm not sure why this project would would change that. You know, we do have, as Steve Whitaker said, a need to find some solution to that, but I don't see one on the horizon. As DeeDee said, these currents are fairly strong there. Could we need a swift water rescue boat if we have this project? Because someone may tumble in. I think there's already been a rescue required down along that stretch. And I also think there are better places to get in the river. Down by the high school, there's. And I also think there are better places to get in the river. Down by the high school, there's a way, a place to do it. And there is the, under the overpass farther out State Street. Finally, there's the concern about the cost and maintenance, and who's gonna keep it clean. I think I sent some photos earlier to most of you on the council about, about what it looks like there now and what Roundabout Park looks like today. So the bottom line, I think you should take advantage of that second bond vote we had on this project, which would allow you to take this money and spend it on other pressing projects. So my hope is that you'll vote to stop the project from going forward with city money. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Phil. I'm looking online to see if there are any other hands up, and I'm not seeing any. Nolan, I see you raised your hand a minute ago.
Mayor, it's me, Nolan Carrer from the Conservation Commission. I've been attending some of these information sessions about this Confluence Park. I'd like to speak from the heart, and I'd like to speak to the heart of my community. This park has the right ideals. This is about investing into the soul of Montpelier. It's been absent since these great floods. The people need a place to come together, and it's not working out for restaurants, at least, not the way it was a couple of years ago. But she's right. The state workers aren't coming out like they used to be. It's time to reinvent our city. It's time to search for that precarious balance of humanity. That is what can happen in a beautiful place. People can form community. Naturally, community policing happens. Our local MPD does not want to be sitting around all day in a cruiser babysitting the local addicts, drug dealers, homeless, alcoholics. I should know, I'm a recovering alcoholic. I'm mentally ill. If it wasn't for some other great resources around the community, I might be down there myself, but I'm afraid to go there. I'm being harassed and intimidated when I walk by there. That's problematic. I intend to prosecute just so I can walk by there without being harassed. It's dangerous. Thank you.
Thanks, Nolan. Folks, I don't want to cut off the discussion prematurely. Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard? Or council members? Do you have? Go ahead, Bill.
Just before the council starts deliberation, I want to make one point clear for the public and for the council to understand. If you choose not to go forward with this, of the six hundred thousand, we will owe one hundred and fifty thousand on a grant funds that we got that would be covered if we did the project. I just want to make sure everyone understands that we would be on the hook for one hundred and fifty thousand. So when, if funds were to be redistributed, it would be four hundred and fifty thousand, not six. Just want to make sure that's a factual, piece of factual information that you all have before you debate.
Thanks, Bill. Tim.
So if we go that route, what's our latitude in terms of what those funds could be used for? Is it restricted to riverfront or parks or?
I probably want to come back, you know, we probably have a future meeting about that. So I'm kind of making this up, so take it. But the, the, there was a single bond article that initially passed this that listed a bunch of projects. And we reworded that bond issue to make it more flexible to move money amongst those projects. I'm pretty comfortable saying that anything that was in that list is out, in and included, something. I don't, I'm less comfortable talking about if we go beyond that. I'd want to get more information about that.
But wasn't this the item that included the maybe doing a wood heating plant at the town garage? And then we wanted to give ourselves more flexibility on whether it was going to be wood or something else. May not be the right year. Yeah. Okay.
We can find the.
Yes. But whatever the voters passed is what is a permissible use for that money. Adrian.
Thank you so much for your presentation, and I voted for the Confluence Park. I can see the vision of the Confluence Park. As many of you know, I'm a huge advocate for recreation in Montpelier, and I've traveled the country and I've seen the benefits of, you know, recreation at the river. And in those cities that I visited, they are a little bit more mature in our, you know, resources, our funding. It's kind of like, you know, a plus project. And so one of my concerns is, you know, we build it, and how are we going to maintain it? It's kind of what people have said throughout the emails today, which, the more I've sat on City Council, the more I've learned about our city government, our resources, our budgets. I would hate to spend, you know, well, six hundred thousand dollars, put us all your fundraising efforts, which is huge amount of effort to build something and then not have a very strong plan to maintain it. I would hate to see an infrastructure like that just crumble without a plan to support it, to clean it, to fix it. You know, a ten, twenty-year plan. I don't know if that's part of your process or thinking, but I would love to see something like that so that we don't build something that ends up deteriorating and falling into the river.
Well, I can speak to a piece of that, and I think it actually ties into some of the questions people were asking about. Is it really resilient? And will this actually withstand floods? And this, the designs for this park were built by Roy Schiff with SLR Engineers. And you heard his name about twelve times for tonight, because he's also designing the dam removals, and he's also designing Home Farm Way. And he's also helping with the hydrology to figure out which are the most important flood mitigation projects. He is one of the very best hydrologists in the entire state or region, and has a fantastic sense of the future of our rivers and how these projects knit together, and is thinking about how each thing ties to the next and what it means. And so he is, he is an expert far beyond any of us here in saying, if it floods, can it withstand? And the answer is yes. They've done everything possible, run models, everything to say, can this hold up? And that's, that's what they built, is something that's designed to hold up. And then the construction itself is designed to, you asked about maintenance, and I think that kind of ties to it in that it's designed to be low maintenance general, generally, in the sense that it uses native plantings and secure construction and materials that are, you know, bolted down and natural materials on site. He would be here with me, but he had a personal obligation today. And so part of the maintenance is, is calling for low maintenance. Another piece is that the way that space is used today is that it's the back of everything. And it's a place for people to hide, and it's for, it's a, it's a place for people to hang out and try to get away. And in other communities, when parks like this are developed, it transforms the space into the back of where anyone wants to be, into a gem of the community where people want to be. And it was the same case, and I mentioned Marty earlier in Franklin, New Hampshire. His park there was a giant homeless encampment. They built the park similar to ours. There's nothing to keep people out of it. It's open, it's welcoming, anybody can go there. But because it is now a useful park where people can actually go and hang out and enjoy, people are using it every single day of the year, and the homeless folks have dispersed. And so those types of things change the maintenance and the use. And there is maintenance required now. There will be maintenance, you know, for that site now. There will be maintenance required in the future. What that looks like will probably be different when it's a park than dealing with the challenges that are there now.
I ask a follow-up question. So thank you for that explanation. One of the things I'm always thinking about is, and I don't, I'm not an expert in this, so hopefully someone else can answer this question. But so you have the fundraising component, you have the design, but what capacity is needed from city staff to support this project? So it's not always about the money and the fundraising, but we also have to layer in city staff capacity and thinking about this as a project in their portfolio. And what is it taking away from? And so this will be added to staff's work. And so when I'm thinking about that, what is it that they're not focused on? And so how much capacity is going to be required of our city staff to support this project?
I can, is my turn? Or, well, we've, Josh, Mike, Bill, we've, we've talked about this in the past. And I, the city owns the land. This, and the city, in fact, contracted with Vermont River Conservancy. And we contracted with SLR in order to do this project. So we created the sign, the plans at the city's bidding, at the city's council's request, and with city funding. And so, and that's where we were leading the community outreach and everything. And so at this point, some of the grant funding are pieces that Vermont River Conservancy has applied for and will receive those dollars. Some of the grant funding, the municipality has to be the applicant, like LWCF. And Vermont River Conservancy did quite a bit of the proposal work in partnership with the city. The city submitted the proposal and the city received those dollars. So the, ultimately, the funds will be mixed together. And I think this is a question that's open to the city. How much do the city staff want to be hiring the contractor and bidding out and doing all those things? Or in a situation to say, hey, Vermont River Conservancy or some other partner organization, can you make this happen? And we're aware, we're informed, we're bought in, but it's not city staff time that's actually doing the implementation. It's, it's, it's others, partners implementing the designs.
Thanks. Mike, you have an answer.
We talked about that a little bit in the past.
Yeah, Mike Miller, Planning Director. So yeah, any of these projects usually have a couple of different components to them. So you're gonna have the grant administration component, so finance and all those pieces, who's tracking it? And Kasia talked a little bit about the fact we got a lot of grants, a lot of pieces that takes a certain amount, because certain, certain funding sources can pay for certain things. You have to organize the project and the grants in certain ways to make sure that if this can only pay for site work, and this can only pay for brownfield work, and this one, you have to make sure you've got everything laid out and organized, and that takes a certain level of grant administration. That may be a city person that has to go and do that, that maybe, you know, we may work with the River Conservancy. We haven't gotten there yet, so we don't know exactly how that would work, but we do this on a regular basis, whether it's DPW, whether it's Josh and folks in my office. I also know Alec does work out of the parks doing some grant administration as well. So we would figure out who's the best person, who's the most appropriate person to handle the grant administration. Second piece being project management. How do we manage the construction side of things? Who's doing the RFPs? Who's doing the bidding? How do we get all these lined up? Again, I think that's a piece that we would look at afterwards to see whether we have the capacity, whether somebody at DPW has the capacity. They did all of the Confluence Park pieces. You know, is this a small project that they can add to their list, or is this a project that we just have to add some funding to do the, to outsource? And some of the grants will cover, sometimes cover these, these costs outside, to bring in somebody outside, whether it's the River Conservancy, or whether it's a third party that would come in to manage the project. So we'll look at both pieces, but at this point, we haven't really gotten to that step of who's doing what piece in that, in the big picture.
Go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, to that point, I'm not really arguing for or against this, but I want to, I do think the history of this is important. I know Kasia referenced it, but this was initially contemplated in the master plan that developed the Transit Center project and the bike path. And that's the reason why a green space is left where that bike path is, was that the idea was a more fully developed Confluence Park with access to the river would be, would be put there. In fact, that was in the initial bond vote, I think in two thousand and two for that project. As that project went through and had to go through all this brownfield work and federal work and all those kind of things, this, that was a piece that got left out of that project for financial reasons. So after that project was completed or near completion, the then-City Council said, we want to complete the rest of this project. How can we raise the funds to do this? And asked the River Conservancy to take the lead on the fundraising and designing a project and doing the community process. So, you know, what you all decide to do is what you all decide, but it needs to be clear, this wasn't a group of individuals of the Vermont River Conservancy sort of running off, creating a project, because they thought it was a cool idea. It was, as Kasia, the City Council wanted to do this and asked that we pursue it. Now, I think the costs certainly changed dramatically from when it was first, you know, figured out. But so, I think that's important. So from, with that in mind, our perspective has been, this is a city project, this is a city council-supported project. It would be in our queue of projects, and you would help us prioritize it along with everything else. If, so that's how that would work, along, we would work it and figure out whether as our own people, we had to hire out, we would manage it like any other project. I also just, I do have the language now, not to divert, but just so people know. So in two thousand and twenty-two, we voted to amend the authorization to borrow a sum of money not to exceed one point one eight five for Highway Recreation Park and Building Infrastructure Improvements. If amended, proceeds from this bond funding may be used to finance a range of city infrastructure projects, such as a renewable energy system and other energy efficiency projects at the Public Works Garage, new streetlights, traffic lights, and intersection improvements, a retaining wall on Marvin Street, various highway infrastructure projects, and Confluence River Park. So I feel very confident that anything in that list is something we can use the month, something other than that list than. So, you know, didn't mean to hijack that question, but I, I had two people gave me this question within seconds.
Appreciate it. Thanks, Bill. Thanks, Mike, for that. Now, seeing a couple of people raise their hands who've already spoken, I'm wondering where we are up here on council before I do that. Go ahead, Carrie. Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll take, hear from, yeah.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. In answer to Counselor Gill's issues, when I spoke about maintenance in my letter, I meant who's gonna take care of the place on a day-to-day, week-to-week, month-to-month, year-to-year basis? Who's gonna sweep the steps every day? Who's gonna empty the trash? Who's gonna pick up after people who are partying there and leave stuff behind, if there are people partying there? In conventional high-water events with mud on the lower levels of the place, who's gonna sweep that off? Where's it gonna go? Who's gonna, which city department has the funding and time to do that? In a big flood event, and we know what comes down river in big flood events, giant logs, toxic sediments, floating propane tanks, who's gonna deal with that? And that, those are expensive propositions that we know are gonna occur in the future, beginning with day-to-day and then gradually escalating as global climate change catches up with us. That's what I meant, and I hope, I don't know if that's what you meant, Counselor, but I hope you think about that as you consider this park. And also remember that we have and take care of the places we've got. So that's, that's a kind of a concern.
Thanks, Steve. Donna.
Donna Bate, Montpelier. I wanted to feed on Bill's comment on history. Not only did we have that as part of One Taylor Street, but project expanded because of community input. I don't know how many charrettes you had, dozens? I mean, it was huge, the attendance, and people wanted more. They didn't want a simple little park. And so, yes, costs have increased, but the big cost difference to me was the public input wanted a very significant park in that corner. And so I think that's just important to remember.
Thanks, Donna. Now, Carrie, Steve, go ahead.
I'll be brief, too. The examples, the real-world examples, the steps that were promised to be removed months ago that floated away from Ena are still sitting up on the riverbank. The silt, the foot of silt in Confluence Park is still there from a year and a half, a year ago. No one swept the bike path. The sand and silt is still on the bike path, even though I pointed out that Bean Mountain Transit is responsible to have removed that. So these, these are very real issues that we cannot ignore until we, let's keep, keep this thing alive, but let's look at it realistically. Realistically, ten years out and and get caught up on some more important things.
Thanks, Steve. Okay, Carrie, you was just recognizing.
Yeah, thank you. So. So I think I. Following up on on the last public comment, actually. In a perfect world where everything worked out exactly the way we want it to, this seems like a lovely idea. And. If we had the money, if we didn't have to worry about flooding, if we didn't have to worry about people who are currently using it and where would they go and how would their needs be met instead? And so a year and a half ago, when we last talked about this, or when we talked about it a year and a half ago. I was, at that point, I was pretty opposed to continuing on with this and thought we needed to. Put our resources somewhere else. And that was before the flood in two thousand and twenty-three and. And now it just feels like, I mean, I'm honestly having a hard time wrapping my head around the idea of putting millions of dollars into. Building something that it it just doesn't feel realistic right now. Maybe down the road. Excuse me, at some point. It would be, but I don't. It doesn't feel to me like an appropriate priority, given what's been happening with our rivers, given what's been happening with our downtown, given what's happening with our taxes. With our financial situation in general. And so I would, I would like to say we we gave it a year and a half. The the amount raised, the fundraising hasn't really significantly changed in the last year and a half. I understand that there are possibly opportunities available in the future, but we did hear that eighteen months ago also. I know that's always going to be changing and I'm not doubting that, but. But I just feel like right now it's time to step back. I also. It it's gone on for a long time, which I think is important, but also lots of things have changed in that time and we need to respect that. And I have heard from a lot of people about this for the past two years and. The majority of people that I hear from are not in support of this anymore, which doesn't mean that that's representative of the whole city, I know, but I do hear that a lot. Also, the the initial bond that passed. It was six hundred thousand dollars tucked into a whole lot of other money for a whole lot of other things. And and I know when I voted on it, I was not thinking, yay, Confluence Park. I was like, well. We need all this money to do all this stuff and okay, I think the part, I don't know what I think about that. And then the second. The second vote was, I would argue more of a vote against Confluence Park possibly, because it was the vote to. To kind of unencumber that six hundred thousand dollars from Confluence Park and. That passed and I again, it was lumped in with other things and we don't really know exactly what people were thinking when they voted on it, but. It's hard to make an argument that. That the public has shown with their votes that they're really strongly in favor of this. I can see a way, maybe some, at some point in the future, that this could come back again as its own bond question. If there really is strong public support for it and people want to put our public resources to it, then maybe we have another bond. Question that's just about this and it's not lumped in with other things and see if that's what people want to do. I I still have to say I feel. Like we have so many other things that we could spend money on and I realize that. It's not a question of three million dollars to spend on Confluence Park or on something else. That's really, we're just looking at the six hundred thousand, but the idea that there is three million dollars potentially out there that could be raised. To to build this park when there isn't three million dollars that might be raised to provide temporary housing for people who don't have houses or for, you know. Public restrooms and trailers for showers or whatever other immediate needs there are. And I know that this is the reality of fundraising is that people are generally more inclined to give money towards something like a park. And. That is very disheartening to me, but it is the reality, but I don't think that that we don't have to. We don't have to go along with that. I'll stop there.
I'm going to see if there are other people on council who have something to say.
Yeah.
I I voted against this project the last time we had a vote and. And for all the reasons I've heard. To discontinue it tonight, as well as the very eloquent reasons that Terry just presented, I haven't changed my my mind. I. I love the idea of a of a riverfront park. I just. I just think we're putting the cart before the horse, particularly since the last vote, we've had. Three, three floods. I mean, there are people who live next to streams for fifty years that suddenly had them in their. Back porch. A lot has changed. In the last thirteen or fourteen months. We just heard from John Copans about studies that are being done on the watershed and the hydrology of Montpelier. If Mr. Schiff had. Had already done those studies, they wouldn't be undertaking them now. So we don't know enough about. About the river, I I think. I mean, I I. I think of when I, when I first moved back to Montpelier. Six or seven years ago. I ran into the. The, what was it called? The Futures. Design contest and. Just about every one of those designs had something on the riverfront. A couple of them, though, included a flood, a floodable plane. That essentially occupies the entire strip of state parking lots from. The North Branch to the Bailey Street Bridge. And it just seems that that's where the river wants to go. I mean, the state doesn't want it to go there, but. This park. Just seems to be starting at the wrong end of things. I, you know, maybe it it's, it probably. Deserves to be reconsidered in the future. I just think this is the wrong. The wrong time for it. We have many other needs. For the fun, for if we're going to bond, we have many other things we we can bond for and need and need to bond for. And that's pretty much where I was eighteen months ago. That's where I am now.
I think so. Tim, I saw your hand up and then Lauren.
I'm on the loop. I. I agree. I also didn't support this last time around. I've been watching since I joined the council and there have been pretty continuous warrants that we've been. Paying out for this project and I've been asking about when we got a chance to talk about it. So here we are. It, for all the reasons people, folks have mentioned. It's, I think the resiliency study right now is really key. And I think before we approve anything else in a riverbank in Montpelier. We need to get a sense of what the priorities need to be, what we need to be looking at. To to focus our efforts and our resources to to get Montpelier as well positioned as we can for future events. So just with that alone, I would, I would like to unplug this one and wait and see what happens. I'm, it's, you know, a lot of thoughts about it. I I think the. It's still struggling with the resiliency piece of it, looking at these images. And looking at how many giant truckloads of concrete would go into this thing in a, you know, a sensitive riparian zone where. I just don't understand how we can call this thing green. It's it's a lovely image, but. I just don't think it's a good fit. I I can see a park for the Confluence at some point, but something a lower. Impact maybe up on top. And and river points of access maybe go to other places where it's easier to access without needing so much concrete and structure to get to it. Because I think that's a lot of the reason for the structures to build the ramps and the steps and all the, all the. Pieces it takes to get, get so people can get down there to enjoy the river. So I'd love to find. Once we have the the studies and we know where to go, I don't think it's going to be this location. But thanks for all your work and thanks for the work of. The Conservancy on, you know, floodplain issues and resiliency and looking at these dams, because I think they are going to be part of the study that comes out that we're going to want to. Get on and deal with.
Thanks, Tim. Lauren.
Yeah, thanks. Well, thanks, Kasia. Like, I mean, this is a project that. I was excited about when we started talking about it. I think like the city does need to be. Thinking creatively and investing in our community and, you know, the reasons Donna laid out, like, I think. Us not trying to create new things because we're afraid of maintenance costs or other things is just not a good way to be thinking about our community and creating a vibrant community. And, you know, people have brought up that. We are changing, so we do need to be looking for different draws and different way to ways to pull people in. Maybe people are more likely to come downtown and have lunch and spend money at our local restaurants if there's a nice place to gather on the river or, you know, I don't know. But like, obviously, I'm hearing the sense of the council right now. I guess a couple of questions. I mean, I I am thinking part of why I asked John Copans about the Rivers Edge Master Plan. Is like, I do think, you know, especially, you know, everyone's talking about we're at a different moment and I do think. There might be some more opportunity for working with the state on that whole parcel, you know, all the way. Like along the rec path. And so how does this incorporate within that? You know, I hope that a lot of the design work that's been done can maybe be usable in the future and maybe it does become like a piece of that. But we're looking at, I know we've talked at some of the. Commission on resilience meetings of, you know, putting like benches and other like floodplain restoration stuff and taking the parking lots out if we could ever. Work with the state to do something like that. So I think there's a lot of opportunity to look at that whole stretch. And I do think some of the studies that are coming out are going to be really helpful. I think getting the dams out is critical and thank you for that work to. The River Conservancy and, you know, like, how does that change the river then? So I I do think, you know. Given the urgency of other pressing community needs paired with a lot that's going on with our rivers with planning. That putting this on hold, I, you know, I totally get where people are coming from, even though it's frustrating when people are like, nothing ever happens in Montpelier. And like, this is a great example, like people on council change, they, you know, the world changes and here we are again, another project we've invested literally decades in that we're not going to act on. So that's frustrating, but. But hopefully that this idea can come back when there's the right time and we've got more information and we've got this. You know, I I'm hopeful if the Rivers Edge Master Plan is useful that there could be a piece that. That this can come back to life and maybe there's different ways to fund it that rely less on taxpayer dollars. You know, thank you for all the work that's gone into the fundraising to date. So. I, you know, I would support the the request made by VRC, but obviously. There's not support from that from the majority of council right now. But yeah, I I think I'll keep looking for ways that. You know, we can continue thinking about the the kind of vision that's been laid out there and how to move that that idea forward of how our community can use the asset of our river with in resilient ways. And build, build resilience as opposed to kind of viewing it as a threat or a hazard.
Thanks, Lauren. Helen, you don't have your hands, hand up. You don't have to say anything, but I don't want to. Okay. Folks, it's it's very clear. Where this is going to me, this is very disappointing because. This was really an opportunity to invest in the, in the future of the city for something that I think could be. Could really be. A gem for the city in the future. Our, our boat last time was to hold, hold the money and give the fundraisers a chance to. Raise the the money and. I suppose we could just say that the. No action was taken. However, I think that. For the clarity of everyone, we should have a motion. To not go forward.
Nice question of Kasia. So the city had allocated six hundred thousand. Is there, like, you've talked about that. I, I guess I'm not clear on like, is there specific city match required? Or is like, you talked about like the demonstrated commitment that could like fifty thousand be a demonstrated city commitment? That we held over that could help still access those grants or is it like it has to be six hundred thousand for some reason?
Um, that's a good question. There are multiple ways to demonstrate city commitment. One of those ways is to say, yes, we like, we want a park. And if you show up here with three million dollars, we would love to build a park in this community. And that voice of support. For the concept can help move the project forward. The other way is financially. And the more that the city is invested in the project financially, the more that funder see that there's skin in the game and that. Your commitment is not just. Something that on paper that's nice to say, but real. And so, yes, if there were a way to hold not six hundred thousand, but five hundred thousand or four hundred thousand or whatever that is. Any amount will be helpful. To to the whole, if this is something that the community would like to continue moving forward with. To that point, I think, Carrie, you brought up, you know, how is there? Potentially three million dollars for this? And the reality is it's because you have a strong partner. And any of the projects mentioned here tonight, dams. Restoration. Parks. You will need partners. And if as a city, the way that you treat your partners. Is to ask them to go above and beyond for this community. And then you decide not to follow through. You will not have partners to work on those projects. And so if there's a way that the city. Can maintain its commitment in some way. Of voicing support for the project. Retaining some financial support for the project. I can bring you three million dollars. I'm here to do that. I want to do that. I can't do it without you.
What about the hundred fifty thousand that we're on the hook for for design?
If the city chooses not to move forward with implementation, the. It was the a hundred fifty thousand dollars was from an LWCF grant, which is for implementation. If the project moves forward to implementation, that grant is glad to pay for design. If the project does not move forward to implementation, that grant is not glad to pay for design. So that's a cost the city has to eat.
Oh, sure.
So that's where the city would have to eat that hundred fifty thousand if the project is not implemented.
Lauren.
So I'm wondering if. The city holds the hundred fifty thousand. That we have to pay anyway. And. Sets that aside for this project, gives. Time, is that an indication where if, you know, it's, that's what we're on the hook for anyway, and so. Couldn't we just hold that?
So your motion would be to pay a hundred fifty thousand dollars for the design?
No, I think we don't have to pay it. We don't necessarily have to pay it. It would be to hold a hundred fifty thousand of the bonding authority. As a show of good faith and either. That's what the city is committed. We're committing that anyway. So could that end up being used as match as the city commitment? Towards implementation instead of. Just paying it for a design that we're not using. It, again, it doesn't, it wouldn't commit us to anything. I think this is just giving till May, the request was in May to see if more money could be brought in. And. In my mind, if we're lowering the taxpayer liability to just what we have to pay anyway, but could actually get a project out of it potentially, then that seems.
You'd have a hundred fifty thousand dollar clap prep cost and a project instead of a hundred fifty thousand dollar cost.
I would entertain any motion that someone wants to make.
I'll move that we discontinue. Support for this project and pay the hundred and fifty for design and. Decide what to do later, I assume we can with the remainder. Which is what, three, three hundred fifty thousand?
Four fifty.
Four fifty.
That's, is there a second?
All second.
I don't know that there's anything. More to say that people haven't already said. Lena, I'm not going to take your comment now. Thank you for being here. I will take a roll call. Gil.
So my, I'm voting on.
Sales motion to. To to stop. Stop the project essentially. Which means we're on on the hook for hundred, hundred fifty thousand dollars, but we're not. Keeping it open. Keeping the rest of the money open as a match of any kind.
And that's not to say we couldn't consider any future projects. Right? Like, that's still. But maybe not.
At any time in the future, anything can happen.
Anything can happen.
I I don't know.
I know, I'm sorry.
It.
Could we? Try to step a second. I want to think about this, sorry.
Having a hard time with this. Um. I, I would hope that in the future we could revisit various opportunities, but I think for now, although yes, so.
Tim.
Yes.
Palin. Is that a, is that a yes? Or you're?
Yes, I was on mute. Yes.
Okay, Lauren.
No.
Adrian.
Yes.
Okay, um, Kasha, thank you so much for all the work you've done. That's, that's it. Um, I think it's a lost opportunity. Thank you all. Um, we'll take our ten minute break.
Thanks, everybody. We are, folks, uh, we are up to. Item eleven, the request for proposals for twelve to sixteen Main Street. It's Mike and Josh, mostly Josh.
Alright, hi, uh. Josh Jerome, Community and Economic Development Specialist. This has been a, a project in the works for a few years now. Um, twelve to sixteen Maine, home uh. Right next to the drawing board, next to Shaw's. Um, and the, the city uh has finished the lot line adjustment to create that parcel. Um, the intention was to do that and for the city to sell it, to get it developed. We're at that point now. Um, and so, you know, before you is a draft R F P. To see what sort of proposal we want to try to generate. Um, some of the decision points for you is whether or not. Um, we identify a specific uh price for the parcel. Um, leave it up for the developer to propose a price. Um, uh. Or identify it for like, you know, whatever you want, whatever sort of qualifications on the developments, portable housing, you know. What process, um, how we're evaluating it, these are the sort of decision points. Um, that are in the R F P that you guys can have flexibility with. So.
And could you flag for us what uh? Decision, what choices are incorporated in it, uh?
Yeah, so the R, the R F P is written as uh, as a proposal for the developer to offer a price to us. For council to consider, right? We've identified the purchase price for the city to, to acquire the parcel. I think it's a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars, right? Um, we have also the uh price that it was appraised at. Four hundred and forty thousand dollars. Um, so those, those two uh evaluations are identified. Um, but again, it's, this is structured so that the developer would offer a, a purchase price to the city. You know, obviously based, you know, what they think, um, they would be a good value and. Maybe uh sort of tied to what we would like to see there, right? Are, do we want housing? What type of housing do we want? Do we want it mixed use? Does that, does the, does the uses? Um, um, that this council might want to have their uh, adjust the, the price that we're willing to accept.
Yeah, I think basically, you know, the, when the council had talked about this last time and directed us to prepare an R F P. You did say that, you know, housing was top priority, um, but you also wanted to get the, the, the um. Appraised values. Now we have, it's our thinking was, we say, you know, here's, here's kind of the different values if. If you want to propose something different but pay more money, you know, I, we, you will get to evaluate the results, but. You could be as specific as you want and we've said in here, it's got to be multi-story and should include housing. That would be the most favorable. Thing, but if somebody says, hey, we'll give you a million dollars and build something else, you know, then you'd have the ability to consider that. Or if somebody wants to. Set their price and say, I want it for, you know, a low price, but I'm going to put in six stories of housing, then we might say, well, that's. You know, it's worth selling it for less to get all that. So I think. The question is, how do you want to frame that? Or do you want to just let people make proposals and evaluate the proposals? I, that's, that's what we were trying to create was a situation. Make us an offer. Here's what I'm going to do and here's the purchase price. But could, do you want to set a minimum purchase price? Do you want to set a purchase? But you know, those are all things. You can say.
Tim.
I, I, I think. We've had a professional appraisal done. We've got a value. I think we offer for sale at that value. Now, this isn't a market that's afraid to offer more if they feel it's competitive and they. They want to offer more and certainly there may be folks who offer less, just like in any other piece of real estate you can buy or sell. Uh, so I would encourage that we set a price. That we, I, I think the R F P is a little bit. Heavy on requirements upfront because you're asking for a lot in a pretty short time. Um, you know, I, but I, so I think maybe a good way to handle it is put it out there at the four forty. And I wouldn't specify what we want. I mean, I, I really think. Development is kind of a creative process. There's some art to it. There's some emotion for the developers. We're putting a project together with an idea. I think we want to encourage creativity for Montpelier and see what we can bring in. And then we'll have the option to accept or reject any offers. Um, and, and it might be within the offer to kind of shorten the R F P a little and make it not feel as daunting on the front end. Because you don't want to scare potential developers away, which this could do a little. Um, might be to have a pre-drawn-up purchase and sale agreement. You know, have the city attorney draw it up, have it ready to go, and then have in some of those elements like um. You know, proof of financial ability and some of those pieces built into a contract uh, might be a good way just to have that covered. Because ultimately, whenever a building's built, we've got our hundred sixty-eight pages of zoning code. Plus the floodplain regs, so what, another fifty-nine or sixty-nine pages on top of that too, that. We're going to have to be able to look at this project and evaluate it and, and decide if it fits. So that would be my suggestion.
Anybody else that, Carrie?
Yeah, I think um, I like the idea of, of saying what we want and being willing to accept less money to. To sell it so that we get what we want. Um. And maybe we would get that if we just, you know, offered it for the, the full assessed value, but. This doesn't really, this isn't really clear about what we want and I understand you're asking us what we want to add in here. Um, so, you know, for instance, if we wanted it to be affordable housing, then. We could take less money for it and that might make, that might incentivize somebody to, to buy it and develop affordable housing. They didn't have to pay. Four hundred and forty thousand dollars for the land. Um, so I, so I would like us to think about that. Or to just, you know, not have any of this and just say, it costs four hundred and forty thousand dollars and, and yeah, and see what we get. So kind of one or the other.
Adrian.
I'm kind of on the same wave as, as Tim and, you know, as I'm not a developer. And so I've never responded to an R F P like this to develop a property. I was kind of putting myself in their shoes and I've. Written, you know, lots of grants and responded to R F Ps and um, I'm just. I want to make it easy for developers to do business with us and remove as, as many barriers as possible. And when I was going through this, I feel like it would be like a lot of work, just narratives and, and, you know, collecting as much information upfront, but. I trust Tim's knowledge of being in the real estate world and knowing that we can put a lot of this into a contract and that we have. These policies that are in place to protect us as a city, um, as we go through the design build process and so. I would, I don't know, I would love for us to set a price and just kind of open it up to see what we get because. I'd be interested to see what people would design in that weird space.
Lauren.
Yeah, I, I like the idea of simplifying and allowing creativity. I guess I'm just thinking about, okay, we get a set of proposals. What are we going to be judging them on? To me, like, housing is what we're talking about, so. A project that, you know, and maybe there's just a way to say simply like, preference will be. Considered for, or however you could word it, to just indicate that, you know, a community goal is increased housing. I would love to see something about energy efficiency. Like, I don't think the city should be paying for new fossil fuel infrastructure. And you can do that affordably now if you're building up front. Ton of incentives. Um. So, and maybe it's like a preference thing, like the cities. So that it just gives some indication, like when we're then looking at projects, we're clearly going to be bringing lenses to how we would assess them. So give developers that guidance. To like, know what we're going to be looking for. Because if they might come up with some like awesome retail, really cool thing, but if that's not what we want, then like, I don't want them spending a lot of time. Creating that. So that would be my, is just like, keep it really simple, but just give some guidance to like, which to me is like housing first and foremost. And. Climate friendly.
Um, yeah, I, I agree with that. Um, I, I like the adding in the climate friendly part. I think that's really important. I think if we were. Going to specify housing, we, I would want to see a mix of different kinds of, of housing, some market rates, some, I would like to see some affordable. Housing in there. Um, and I think that if we're going to. I think we have an opportunity with, we own this piece of land. We can sell it, we can give it away, we can sit on it, we can, you know, all kinds of things and so. We have some power to influence what happens with it and I, I would like to use that. So, so that I would prefer to have a, an R F P that is saying we want housing, we want mixed. Kind, mixed housing, um, and we want, you know, energy resilient and whatever our other specifications are. And then I'm, I'm a little hung up on the question about whether we set a price for it or whether we tell people just to offer us whatever you want. Um, I would like to get back the money that we spent on it. That sounds nice, but that's a lot less than the market value. Um, and that, this is where I don't, I don't know like what's realistic, you know, are people going to be saying, oh, if you want. Affordable housing and you want this and that and the other thing, then I'll buy it from you for a dollar and give you all this other stuff. And if, is that the, the best, I, I don't know, so.
Yeah, two clarifications, Josh, just, so in our zoning code right now, if somebody builds. X units, is there a percentage that has to be affordable within that? Is there some clause that requires you build at least X percent of your units? No, there is, okay.
No.
Alright.
I mean, um, portable housing obviously is really expensive in the state of Vermont. Um, it's about five hundred thousand dollars. A, a unit um, right now, right? Um, and so, you know, for market rate, you're looking at. Three hundred and fifty, four hundred thousand dollars a unit. Um, you, you know that the city of Berry has been sold a lot for a dollar. St. Albans has been selling lots for a dollar. Winuski's been selling to do affordable housing, so if I'm just, you know. The more money that we are asking for on the lot, the less affordable the housing is going to be. So I think trying to figure out what. That mix of housing that you want on that parcel is going to dictate the purchase price. Feasibility of it. If you want all affordable housing, but you want four hundred and forty thousand dollars for the lot.
Yeah, no.
That's, that might be a, a tough proposition.
I, so the, the other question I had for you was, um. The, the energy code that one has to build to today? I mean, just, just so you know, I think there are standards out there in code you have to build to, so it's not. I think anybody building to build it to today's code is going to be doing. Probably minimal fossil fuels. They might hitch up to district heat in Montpelier, they might not. Um. They might use heat pumps, no?
And Lauren, I see.
There's no district heat there?
No.
They couldn't do district heat out here. Wow.
Uh, and, and Josh, have you been uh in touch with uh? Since we're talking about affordable housing, have you had any communication with, with Downstreet?
About this particular parcel? I mean, uh, a little bit. It's mostly been on the Country Club Road and some of the other projects that they're working on. Um, in town. Um, so not, not on this particular parcel itself. They're aware of it. But like I said, more Country Club Road and Heaton Street.
Because just as we're talking about, if we're talking about affordable housing development in central Vermont. They're basically it and they've got. Only, only a certain capacity.
I've had some inquiries too, just I think more general inquiries that people wanting to know. If they could do something else on the first floor, like whether it's retail or office or something and then housing up. Or, so I think, you know, given that it's a main street, downtown main street. That might be the kind of things that people want to do. I, I've just said, you know, housing is our top priority. We'll see what, what comes out.
So.
I'd like the idea of a mix of housing types. Um, I like the energy stuff. I mean, the, the code. Still permits fossil fuels and it's just so easy to do. Non-fossil stuff now, particularly as new construction compared to what it is for retrofitting. I, I think we ought to include something like that. I do like your idea of. Putting the, I mean, this does feel like a grant application. I mean, it's, you know. Pretty heavy duty and there's like six weeks to do it, right? So. I like the idea.
Also add more time.
You could add more time.
More time, like this.
Or you could put it, or you could put it in a sales agreement that, you know, once we look at the offer, this is the kind of information we're going to be looking for. From, from uh, the bidder. Um, you know, pricing, I, I mean, I think. A smart bidder will review the video of this meeting and realize that we'll probably take a dollar for the lot, but. I think what we get for the lot is the least of our worries.
We could have actually.
It's the, it's the least of my concern because uh, what is built there is, is, you know, is a long lasting investment. So that's what's the most important part.
My quick comment too is just in terms of how our processes work, because we haven't had a lot of new buildings in town. I think. Too much specificity, too much, you know, having a developer try to dance through too many hoops. Basically ends up being designed by committee and you get something that looks like city center, which is exactly why that building looks like it does. I, I, I really would hope we would just. Go out for bids and see what people bring us. Housing is what they're going to do. That's, it's what the market's demanding right now. I mean, I, I do think a first floor use that's commercial or different is likely, but I, I'm not worried about the housing component and we need housing at every level. So it's, the only housing we've really created has been affordable last quite a while. There are a lot of people in the middle who need homes too. And there are enough other projects going on right now, so this isn't the only one. But, so I, I would encourage us to be open-minded and uh, I do think you should set a price though. I, I think it's a, it's really a flawed and.
I don't know if you can hear me or not. I don't know if I'm in here.
I, I can hear you. I don't know if you're being picked up.
Is that mic working?
It is, okay.
Um, a couple of things. I, I'd like you all to be aware that by, when the city. In order to put the bike path through, demolish M and M, it put all of the merchants in a. Very predict, in a predicament. Uh, the, the way that the solid waste recycling law works is that. They have to have a designated redemption center to get, to, to get an exemption from the bottle law. So right now, most of them are still unaware of it. The article just came out in the. Did you, did y'all see the article in the paper last week about redemption centers? Uh, beverage baron ceased to be a redemption center in South Berry, I believe, and we, we had lost M and M. They had to therefore, because I, I did the lawyer request of the exemption letters for Montpelier. They then, that triggered them having to send the cancellation of exemptions to people who, who around Berry. So there is no redemption center in Montpelier at all and all the merchants are legally required to take back. The size and brands of what they sell and they're all, I mean. Sitco is saying, I'll go out of business before I'll start doing that. And he's the one who sells all the.
Jumbo's.
The uh, the jumbo beers to the people that drink it for breakfast. Uh, but my point is that possibly. Some, some things to consider in the R F P, a preference for uh. Affordable yet still on the tax list. I don't want to have Downstreet build something there and not pay taxes on it. And secondly, a redemption center is an essential need. Otherwise, you're going to saddle this community, every merchant. Down to the State House cafeteria and. Capital stationers. I've, I've gone and done the inventory of everybody who has to start taking their cans back, the hardware store, et cetera, et cetera. It's a mess. So we have some obligation. I did a request and the city didn't even consider this before they abolished the M and M.
All right. I, I, I think that, uh, one of the things we're looking for is a lot of flexibility for the city because although Tim's right, you know, the market is telling us we, uh, housing is needed, but we don't know what a proposal is going to look like. And I, I think that we want to be able to give people a chance to come to us and with an, with an interesting idea, let us say, yeah, go for it. So that militates argues in favor of adding flexibility to this system and probably taking out some of the detail from the, uh, from the RFP.
It would be helpful if that was identified because I feel like this is pretty flexible.
Excuse me, Josh. The two Steves either converse out in the hallway or not here, because it's, we can hear you up here, both Steves.
Right up.
Um, so we can hear you up here. It's kind of difficult to concentrate. So if you, if you would like participate in the meeting, great. If you want to have a conversation, please. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. I feel like this is pretty flexible. So if there are, um, requirements that are identified in here that you want me to eliminate because you think they would be burdensome, that'd be great. Please, I'd like that feedback. Certainly, certainly the application timeline. We're, we're sort of early enough in, uh, the year where we can extend that. That's not an issue. And I think, I don't know how many development RFPs, like everybody has reviewed. This is pretty scaled down version of a lot that I've read. But if there's sections in here, you know, I, I, you want me to remove because you think it doesn't create flexibility, please. Yeah. That's, that's a critical feedback for sure.
Yeah, I, I, the number of RFPs like this that I've reviewed is zero. So I'm happy, happy to rely on other people's expertise.
Carrie. I, I have no expertise. I've reviewed one now. Essentially, this one, but I also thought it was extremely flexible and open and not very, um, not very onerous, but that then I'm definitely coming from a, a world of applying for grants and where there's, you know, lots of specificity. The timeline definitely is short. But I would rather put in stronger language about what we would like to see. Say a mix of housing, you know, housing is, is primary. We already have that in there, but that it's a, a mix of different kinds of housing. And, um, and I'm, and I mean, I'm leaning towards not having a price on it and just seeing what people will offer us for the ability to, um, to do something creative and different. But I, I don't know if that's a smart business decision, so I'm, 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 I'm not going to be arguing for that exactly. Um, I do have a question though about, um, up in, section, okay, sorry. Okay. So section three, where it says the opportunity. And it has factors for consideration. So it says no act 250 permit required. Um, for priority housing projects, no minimum parking, but et cetera, et cetera. And then it says tax stabilization policy allowing for a base incentive of 50% reduction of municipal taxes on the increment created as a result of the development over five years. City council must approve. So that's a TIF, right?
No.
It's not TIF. Okay. So tell me more about what that actually is.
Well, we, we actually have a tax stabilization policy. And, and so this is a quick summary of it. Um, that, that policy does provide an incentive for developers. Um, so if, if a developer was coming to and want to have a project proposed, they come in for tax stabilization. Council has the ability to approve, um, an increment of stabilization for the project. So, uh, right now the lot's undeveloped, right? Theoretically it's assessed at 400 or appraised at $440,000. If somebody had a tax stabilization policy and they were to develop a building that would be assessed at 1.5 million dollars, 50% of that increment, the, of the increase would be stabilized over a period of time. In this case, the base is five years.
Okay. So that's something that might be available to them. If we were to approve it in the future, and we might be inclined, more inclined to do that perhaps if the project looked more like what we want it to look like. And so maybe they have to spend more, building more affordable units, or they have to spend more doing something. And then in exchange, they might hope that they get this.
We have a tax stabilization policy.
Yeah.
Spells out what?
Yeah.
What you have to do, like the, the kinds of things we want to.
Right. And then similarly, we might, there's something in here about we might enter into a development agreement with them. So maybe, would that be part of a proposal that they might make to us, do you think, or?
Although I, you know, there's not a lot of public infrastructure.
No, and I, I, I'm, yeah, the development. So we have, we have our development agreement policy, but just like in a development agreement in general between, you know, the city, we're, we're selling this parcel. We're having a development agreement. They're going to, they're promising us to, to, to build X that you've approved, right? So that's, that, that's what I'm talking about with the bad development.
Yeah, okay.
Cause it is a little different. I mean, you know, if we just put it on the market for whatever price and someone bought it, you know, they could, I think in our case, we want to make sure there's some surety. They're actually going to do what they tell us they're going to do as opposed to, well, I bought the land, it's mine now. I can do whatever I want, or I'm just going to sit on it. So that's, it's that kind of development agreement, which is, you know, you're, we sold it, you know, especially if it's less than market value, right? We gave it to you at a discounted price because you were going to do X. And then they're like, wow, yeah, you know, I could, I don't really want to do it. We have to make sure there's some clawback or some, some teeth in it to, you know, if that's the deal, that's the deal.
So what else? I, I gather that people are not willing to just sign off and say, yeah, do this now, although it seems like, you know, I, I agree, there's a lot, there's a lot of flexibility here. It could, and everything, every, every offer comes to the council and we either approve it or not. So that gives us like the ultimate discretion and control.
Ten second, five second question. Who encourages the cost of the contaminated soils? It's not clear from reading subject to section two. It says there's a plan, but it doesn't say who's going to pay for the contaminated soil.
The, the contaminated soils that we already have a corrective action plan. The SMAC letter is actually in draft form with the Department of Environmental Conservation. Um, and actually that they should be signing that fairly quickly. The SMAC letter is site management action. Uh, certification, I think that's what it is. So the, the, the contaminated soils, I, I believe based on the, um, the map that I saw are underneath the pavement and are outside of this parcel. So the site won't actually be disturbed. Um, based on my review of the ma, the map.
So nothing's going to have to be done to them. So you're saying?
Uh, well, I mean, so we've informed DEC that we in, are intending to go through an RFP for changing the use. That's the first step. So they're aware, they're very thankful. Um, and that the next step would be when a developer, um, is chosen, that they just need to be informed that, you know, there's, there's this contaminated site. Here's the, here's the locations. You can't disturb it. But again, in this case, the, I, the locations appear to be outside of this parcel underneath pavement that we own. So that wouldn't be disturbed soils for the development.
And the disturbing of soils, what would trigger a requirement for some kind of remediation?
For this particular site, they just have to come up with a, a, a management plan and how they would, um, protect their workers and how it, how would they would, uh, handle the soils.
Okay.
That's pretty difficult. A downtown site with dirty dirt.
Right.
What do they call it? It's almost every site you build in the old developed area is going to happen.
Boy, yeah, they found five underground storage tanks when they did this.
So actually it's a, it's a value added that you've taken this step and done it in addition to all the other things that have happened over the last several years to make it a better viable site. So I wouldn't get hung up on what we paid for. We've done a lot of investment in this site. It's a city to make it a, a better and a viable site for something good to happen.
And Tim, you see this as a, as an attractive spot for, for an investor.
I do. And I think it's one of the highest elevation downtown spots. If you think about it, kind of like Confluence Park area. Um, you know, they're both very high. It's one of the areas in the floods that didn't flood. It's, it's high. And so actually the building that was designed back when, when it was looked at, when Eminem went out, uh, I was really impressed from the first glance at those plans that it really fit right in and didn't look like it was like jacked up. You can put a really nice building there that fits in and fits the streetscape and still is up, you know, above design elevation and will meet the standards.
And there are not that many locations in downtown.
Very few.
So we have a, uh, we have, uh, some choices here, including either to approve this RFP as it is, or to ask for some changes. And I don't know what those changes would be, that what I've heard is, uh, one, maybe name a price. Two, more, uh, more detail about housing.
I, I would just want to have something that, that says we want a mix of different kinds of housing. You know, different sizes of units, different, different costs. Not necessarily more specific than that, but that is, that's a mix. So it's not all luxury, high end condos. And it's not all affordable either, the mix. That, that's personally what I'd like to see.
So I think the housing committee's come up with language that we coached them on, uh, from the energy committee on exceeding the, exceeding the code. There are, the, the code actually describes, um, specific approaches to exceeding their code. And, uh, so there's, there's language that the housing committee has that you might review that would indicate, um, what Lauren was talking about fossil fuel, but actually going above what's permitted by even the uh, highest level of the existing energy code.
Yeah, Lauren, I thought I see you shaking your head, head about someone would be required to do with non-fossil fuel development based on our current code or current zoning.
Yeah. I mean, Sal spoke to it. You could definitely still put it in fossil fuels under the current energy code. So I think if we're trying to indicate, um, that we want this to be, you know, I mean, you should be putting in heat pumps or whatever. At this point, there's so many options that are affordable and avoid the fossil fuels. So, um, so I think indicating that, and it might be like a simple way to reference. And if people wanted more, like if an applicant wanted more clarity on what do we mean? You could point them to it or something, just, just to the point of keeping it simple and not adding like a whole long section. Or even just like climate friendly design or something. And then we could look at what they come out with. Just, just to indicate that that's something we'll be thinking about when we look at it. So they are aware of that.
Like we encourage and, and the, the whole concepts, we'd love to see them.
Yeah. So.
The code also, doesn't the energy code also require, um, charging stations? When you get to a certain density?
Parking with people.
So that's, I'm wondering if, if there's no parking requirements, are we including chargers within that? Cause I think that's maybe wrong. We have to, we should check that to see if, if code does require charging stations and maybe we want charging stations, but, um,
We do.
Price.
But if there's no parking.
They're going to have trouble to find a place to put a dumpster, say nothing about parks.
Yeah.
I mean, it's.
Yeah, I think that's something to consider too. I mean, I think all, I, I, this doesn't speak against any of the ideas, but I think in terms of, you know, it is a pretty limited, I mean, it's great location, but the site is got a funky shape and it's small. And, you know, there, there was an approved building on it, which actually had a, a redemption center on the first floor. And I think it was offices on the upper floors at the time, so that there is a design people can work for. From, or at least use as reference. But, you know, it probably isn't going to be more than three or four stories, just given downtown. And I think what you get above three, you got elevator.
You're wrong, Bill.
But.
I think it's got to be more than three just to pay for.
Oh, well, that may be.
I mean, the cost of one of those babies.
Yeah, that's true. Well, so I think, so, but I get, what I'm really trying to get at is I don't know how many units there just will be. So I think that's something we probably need to wait and see like how many you can really get in there. I don't know. You know, maybe if you went four or five stories, you could get two units per story. I don't know. It's a tight spot, maybe three. That depends how big they are.
Size, right?
Yeah. So.
It's a, yeah. Need an architect.
Right. No, no, I know. That's what I mean. It's just, I'm saying, so I think we we're all picturing maybe a 40 unit building and it's going to be maybe a eight unit building or something. So.
Right. Well, I remember the idea that someone had years ago of putting a 14 story building on that site.
Now it was beside the old country store site.
Was it? But it was going to be one for every county. For some reason they thought that made sense, but.
Show base.
But I don't think it's going to be 14 stories.
No. Well, there's only a lot of six, right?
Lauren.
It's a max.
Yeah, I guess I've just, I've been kind of wondering with Carrie's suggestion of reference for mixed income. I, I have been wondering if that's a pretty small site, like it might be that you could get more units that are all like middle income housing than if you're having to do different sizes. So just to like the creativity and like maximizing units might be more my goal than like number of units. I mean, ideally not like million dollar condos or something, but so maybe there's some indication of addressing affordable and moderate priced housing or something, some indication of that. But I don't know, it's just the more flexible, we could do it with an indication that housing, and then we'll be able to look at the proposals. I feel like would be my inclination on the housing piece. And then, and then flexible, like, sorry.
No, go ahead.
And then just like, I think it's just general nod to the climate stuff without going into the energy code. Cause now that Sal's talking about it, like I just remember being very detailed and I don't know that every aspect, it will be relevant to this building. So I don't want people to get overwhelmed. And really we just want them to be hopefully putting a proposal together that's.
But, but to clear, whatever, be clear of what everyone's thinking, nobody's saying that any particular item we put in here is going to be, uh, something you must meet this or you don't get approval. It's all, here's a list of things that we're all in, that we're interested in seeing. And these are things that we will consider in evaluating any proposal.
It, it does say in the evaluation criteria, ability to maximize development potential for the creation of housing as one of the, one of our evaluation criteria. And, you know, developers like they love doing projects because, you know, that's how they make money. So they'll figure out a way to get what we want and they'll get what they want, right?
But we can eliminate the statement of understanding. We know what they want.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just saying, we asked them to, to talk about why they want the project. I mean, let's, we know why they want the project. It's why we want the project that is important. So can they satisfy what we want?
Understood.
I guess the, the question is, do you just, would you like us to bring back a revised draft? Or do you want us to just go ahead and issue something that meets what you said? Or, you know, I mean, I, we do have some time. We just wanted to get, this has been pending and it was, we wanted to get this moving. So, cause we, we should.
Lauren.
I feel like, I mean, maybe even the housing language that's in there is fine. Again, adding something of climate friendly design. I guess the last lingering question to me is do we put a price? And I would really lean heavily on Tim's advice on that one personally.
Just think you need to guide the market.
So you, what are you suggesting? That, do you assess value?
Yeah. Well, the 440.
Yeah.
This is so outside my, my zone of no, knowledge at all, but it's very interesting and I'm, I'm learning. I'm thinking hard about this. And so it may be that the way it's written is flexible enough, is directive enough. And, and I'm just. And, and I'm just thinking about what I don't want to have happen is that we sell it for a reduced rate. And we get more housing, which is great, and a whole lot of profit for whoever developed it. And nothing in particular extra for us, you know? So if we're going to sell it for less than market value, I want us to really get something for it. So it doesn't, it doesn't seem like we're leaning towards being super, super directive and prescriptive in what we're asking for. And so then it's, it doesn't feel like a great exchange to sell it for a lower price. So if we want to put it, so, so I'm, I'm easily persuaded to go with the four forty in exchange for not being super directive in the RFP.
What, what other people think about?
I don't know.
That question. Yeah, I, I don't know the answer for sure either, but Lauren.
I don't have the right phrase in front of me where, um, but just thinking of the housing piece, I wonder if we put in something like, sorry, I should find it, ability to maximize development potential for the creation of, creation of housing. Like in, including the need for more affordable housing or something, like just something to indicate like that if we're going to give that preference, that might even influence what we would accept for a kind of overall development agreement that, that's something we'd be looking favorable. Otherwise, that's not indicated in here at all. So maybe that, like affordable or mixed-use housing, like the, addressing the need for affordable or mixed-income housing, however you had said it. Just, I'm just like, again, like if we're, if we have in our heads, we're going to judge this, like I'd rather people just know when they're trying to be creative about how to address what we're looking for. So.
If I'm going to come in and ask to buy it for less than the asking price, what am I proposing that's going to make you want to sell? Yep. Sell it to me for that.
Yeah, just thinking like, what are we going to get out of this? In the end, it's if we create it properly, it'll generate tax revenue. And a building in that league will be more than fifty thousand dollars a year. Easily right now, plus you're going to have water and sewer rate. He says, well, it'll generate more than ten thousand year income for the city is an ongoing piece and going up every year as we know. But so I think that's a plus. But I, I think just keeping it housing focused, if you wanted, I, I'm trying to think, if we do, I'd move that we offered at four hundred and forty thousand, that you just maybe modify the RFP a little to include the energy efficiency preferences, preference toward mixed-use housing. And, uh, obviously we'll look favorably upon, you know, income-sensitive housing units. And then just let's get it going.
Timeline, do you guys want to adjust the timeline?
You gotta move that out. I mean, you know, and it's like, even for somebody to tell you a timeline they can build right now. I mean, I've been calling builders on a few things and I got a, first one I called told me September of twenty-six. I mean, it's.
Well, this doesn't prescribe when they can start. This just prescribes when the RFP should be due and, and the decisions by council, not for when it's supposed to be started.
Anticipated construction date and milestones? Until tenancy?
Where? What page is that?
Um, it's under project approach, isn't it? Or? Yeah, project approach, like fourth bullet.
Which four?
So it's just asking for what they're.
Page four.
That's just, that's them saying when they can start, when they're proposing the development to start.
Yeah.
Not a saying when it has to. It's a, it's a variable that you might use to decide, oh, they're not going to start it for three years, but this one is going to start in eighteen months.
Yep. And then you've got to judge who's realistic.
Yeah. But i- and in thinking about in terms of what the city's getting out of it, we paid a hundred thirty-four for it. If we get four forty for it, we also get that three hundred thousand.
Just another money question, because we're bouncing here. Um, was there an amount of money that we had to reimburse the state that had something?
That's what the one thirty-four was.
That's the one thirty-four. So that's not our acquisition cost, is it? That's the penalty we have to reimburse.
Wasn't the penalty, we, they bought the money, they bought the lot. It's part of, you know, we'd paid our share of all, all the acquisitions.
Right.
So we, we may have had a, a smaller share. So that was their share of, once they determined that that was not necessary for the project, they could reserve it for transportation use, or we could buy out their interest. And so the residual interest was the hundred and thirty-four thousand, and we reached an agreement with them to pay it over two years. So.
We bought three properties, right?
Right. But we, but we also bought the car lot and we bought, we like, it was, it was in part of all of those.
But for this site, the three properties were the old Fisherman's Galley, the, the, the Tomahawk Block and the M and M, and that's part of this.
Yes. Yep. So we have to look and see what our share was for that purchase, because there was, we did a federal grant that that we purchased those properties through the federal grant. And then this was declared surplus to the project. And so we, we had to pay to have a hundred percent rights to that. So it might be a little bit more. I think I have.
But we've already paid that.
We've already paid it, but it's just in terms of what we get back.
But you're really not making that much money when you keep the under four forty, is it? Making some, it's good, but.
Yeah. Okay. Is, is everybody happy with this? Do we need a motion or do you want to just? Tim made it and, uh, I don't know if the clerk was able to track the motion.
Well, I tracked. Maybe where this is, uh, to move, uh, to offer it four forty K and to modify the RFP towards efficiency and mixed-income housing? Is that it?
As, as Tim was going on, it, he, well, wrapped up with, and let's get this going. And I was wondering, well, are those words part of the motion too?
I think I got the key there. There wasn't a second.
There wasn't a second yet. Okay. Any further discussion? All right, ready to vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Let's get this going. All right, we're up to, thanks, Josh. We're up to item twelve, responsible contractor ordinance. I'm sorry?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're still going.
I'm still seeing it on my screen.
Screen for a second, so I can back.
All right. Hi, I'm Kurt Modica, um, Public Works Director. Uh, before I start on the responsible employer ordinance, I just wanted to address one of the public comments earlier about, uh, School Street. So School Street is, um, and all the neighboring streets, a very old water system, one of our many very old water systems in town. And, um, you know, prior to the project, we did clean out all the valves, um, and, um, and we shut all the appropriate valves. They just did not, did not hold pressure, which we, um, were aware of because we've had so many leaks on School Street. But these valves have been used many, many times and our staff has always had to fix things with water flowing. So, uh, I don't think the contractor was used to that, that to having to work with some pressure still on the system. Um, and so there was some pushback. Uh, we have not agreed to any additional cost, um, for that delay. It did, it did delay the project for one day, um, but uh, there has been no, no commitment for extra cost to the contractor at this point. And the next day when they did it, it was still under pressure, the same valves were used. And they were able to do the work.
Thanks, Kurt.
Just want to make that clarification.
And before you get started up, what I'll say, I'll say at this point, the same thing I said at the beginning of the, uh, Confluence Park, discussion, which is that we've received a number of, uh, emails from people on both sides of this issue. And so I appreciate all the, uh, comments and emails that people have sent us. You're on.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so I just want to start by sort of laying the groundwork of where, um, where the city is at. Uh, you've seen a lot of things coming to council from staff, uh, with regard to improving the tax base with, uh, reducing costs. Um, we've modified our purchasing policy to make things more flexible for us, um, and saving money. We were able to save nearly a hundred thousand dollars on School Street as a result of that change, but it also brought us up into compliance with, um, uh, with federal requirements. Uh, we've had the development agreement that staff proposed to try to spur a larger tax base and get, um, some of these projects going. And, um, tonight I want to talk to you about the responsible employer ordinance and its financial impacts on, uh, on the ability to do infrastructure projects. Um, but before I get into that, just want to, uh, remind council of our, our last budget. We really cut everything out of the operational budget to the core, including one of, um, one of the public works staff members. And, um, and there's really not much left to come out of the operating budget. We made a, we made a conscious decision to really try to put as much into capital as we could. That resulted in about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars of paving, which is roughly half of what we need to sort of maintain steady state. We also have had to defer a lot of our equipment purchases. So we've got a real backlog of equipment that needs to be replaced and our maintenance costs is, is really going up quickly. Um, we didn't put any money in for storm, stormwater funding and no sidewalk money. So, um, there's a ton of needs, um, in the infrastructure in the city. And, uh, and I'm just nervous. I'm nervous that that we're not going to be able to fix things fast enough, um, like School Street, there's so many valves in the system, um, that don't work. And it makes things, it makes it challenging to, um, to fix leaks, to maintain the system. We get sinkholes all over the place from old metal culverts that are sinking in. So there's just, there's a massive need and, um, and this ordinance has an impact on how much infrastructure the city can replace, uh, financially. Um, we also have some things coming up in next budget. Um, you know, there is a number of HMGP projects, um, that some of the earlier presenters talked about. We've got Elm Street, Deerfield, Lower State Street, North Street, Dickies Dam and, um, the Dogger Road elevation for the wastewater plant. Those, those projects, um, they are funded if the, um, if the benefit cost analysis comes back favorable, so that the investment you make in that work is, is, um, less cost than the recurring damages. If it's not, they won't fund that and that's going to be on the city to fund. Uh, we also have the stump dump. I don't know what the future is at the stump dump. We're, we have a contractor, a consultant, um, under contract to work on that design, but that could be a really, um, potentially expensive, um, replacement for the city. And, um, and we really need it for maintenance. We don't have anywhere else to put catch space and cleaning or street sweeping or anything. So it's kind of, it's critical for maintaining our permits for operations of the city. So based on, on School Street, and then I will admit, I don't have a ton of data, um, but I do have one project, but I've had a lot of discussions with the contractor. One of, where we're looking at, what I estimate is about a ten percent cost increase for, uh, construction projects. For the responsible employer ordinance. And that's not just the change in wages, but it's also the administrative component of, you know, making sure that they're complying with, um, the requirements of the ordinance. So, uh, with that said, I just, um, I wanted to, I wanted council to consider a temporary waiver of the ordinance as we work through flood recovery. There are so many projects in the queue and so many unknowns in the future. Uh, and so many needs there's, I hear, um, so often from residents, how much they pay in taxes and how poor their street is. And, um, and with the budget challenges we're facing and all the cuts that we've already made, um, and not really anywhere else to cut, um, I just, I think it, I just wanted to make the recommendation for council to consider a two-year suspension of the ordinance to help us through flood recovery. If that's not something council wants to consider, then, um, I have a proposal, uh, for proposed changes within the ordinance to make it more effective. Uh, the second issue with the ordinance, um, aside from the construction cost increase is the way it's structured. We have no way of verifying that contractors are complying with it. All they do is, is sign us a certification that they're going to comply with it. And we don't have any certified payroll. We don't have any audit mechanism. So we don't know if it's, if it's actually working, if people are getting, if their employees that are doing the work are getting paid, um, the state wage rates. So, uh, uh, before I go into the specific changes that, um, we've laid out here, I first wanted to have counsel, you know, discuss the initial concept of a temporary suspension of the ordinance. And, uh, I'll stop there for a minute.
Very.
I have a question about, um, the wages that the city pays to the city employees and, our public works employees getting paid prevailing wages. Or would, are we possibly ending up in a situation where our contractors are getting paid more than our city staff?
Yeah, it's, it's sort of complicated because, um, each task, you know, it depends on the type of work you're doing, um, how much you get paid. So if you're doing concrete work, you get one rate. If you're doing pipe work installation, you're doing another. If you're flagging, you get another, and our, our staff does all of those things. So I would think there's probably instances where they are getting paid that and so probably instances where they're not. Yeah, but benefits on state wage rates are also part of the requirement. So there's a forty-two percent fringe benefit, they call it. That's required in addition to the rates.
But our employees are just, where if you're out, out on a job working for a construction company, you may be getting paid at three different rates on the same day based on the work you're doing, but our employees are just getting paid based on, uh, the collective bargaining agreement.
That's correct.
Gotcha. So.
Kurt, can you put a dollar figure on that ten percent over the two years?
I mean, it depends on how many construction projects we advance. I can give you an example, um, the, the large bond we have through USDA for the wastewater plant. BioSalads project and East State Street, that's funded together, um, through USDA, which does not have any wage rate requirements. So this ordinance would apply in that case. That's about twenty-four million. So that would be roughly a quarter million cost add for those two projects.
Lauren.
Uh, just a couple of questions. When you're kind of going through the long list of like upcoming projects, how many of those do you think would be triggered by the two hundred or three hundred thousand? Just to get a sense of scope of, because I thought it was like not very many that we've done recently have actually triggered this till School Street.
Yeah, we did. So I would say the majority of the, of the flood recovery projects, this would be triggered under because, um, FEMA does not have wage rates. So the only wage rates, um, through funding requirements are, are the state loan program. So the state revolving loan funds. Um, they have Davis Bacon rates, which is not what our ordinance has, but, um, it's a similar concept and, um, the ARPA funds also have, um, Davis Bacon rates associated with them, but none of the FEMA projects, none of the HMGP projects have wage rates. So all of those, all of the forty-four, um, FEMA recovery projects and all of the HMGP projects, which I don't know exact number, probably a dozen of those. This would apply to, so it's a pretty significant amount.
Are, are we able to get reimbursed for that or do we? Like, aren't those re, we're getting reimbursed FEMA or are they not going to, they'll only pay a certain amount for labor?
Um, so FEMA, there's the match, which, so that would be the increase for the city. HMGP, um, this round, you know, if we get to construction would be a hundred percent. But those, those projects that we are not able to fund through the benefit cost analysis have the potential to be fully funded by the city. You know, if that doesn't get through that, it doesn't qualify financially through HMGP.
I'll, I'll get to you folks.
So.
Uh, to be clear, 24 million, 10% is 2.4 million dollars?
Oh, yeah. Did I do my math? I missed a decimal on that.
2.4 million dollars paid above and beyond what we would ordinarily pay due to this ordinance.
That's right.
Over two years. On, on how many projects?
Two, two projects.
On two projects.
East State Street, they are big projects.
They're big projects, yeah.
Well, some of the biggest we've done.
Um, Kurt, I know this is where, you had expressed a desire to limit the first part of the discussion to one question, which clearly, that's not the way it's going, people are asking all kinds of questions. Um, and I'm, and I'm going to do the same thing, uh, which is, um, if, I've, I've been hearing people say, well, we shouldn't water down the protections that we have in our current, uh, responsible employer ordinance. And then, uh, but the proposed amendment to the ordinance is to, instead of having a standard of, uh, the standard we have under the ordinance is to do, uh, a Davis Bacon standard. And I wonder if you or if anyone can tell us what the impact of that would be on us as the contractor and what the impact would be on, on the workers? Or would we, is it reasonable to say that the workers would be getting screwed if they, if we move, go from our ordinance to, uh, Davis Bacon standard or, or what? Does anyone know the answer to that?
Well, again, it's a moving target, so, um, these rates change every year based on a survey. So for our current ordinance, which is the state prevailing wage rates, um, they survey contractors and what they're paying, um, for three different regions in Vermont, so the, uh, southern, northern and Chitting County are basically, basically the three regions. So it depends on, on the economic climate in those areas and, um, and what that, what, how those results come back. And it's, um, and for the Davis Bacon rates, it's federal, so it's a national average. Um, I think there are some that go both ways. I would say probably in general that Davis Bacon rates are slightly less, um, but it's not a hundred percent in that category.
So.
Well, I, I didn't do a lot of infrastructure work when I was in the construction biz, but I know I, I shied away from Davis Bacon jobs because it, it was a burden to, to me as a contractor, to have to do all the record keeping and, and change my payroll and all that stuff, just wasn't worth it. And a, and a $300,000 project is well within the capability of a very small, uh, excavating, plumbing, you know, HVAC, whatever type company. And I think we'd be, I think a lot of those guys, particularly in this climate where there's work all over the place, which, which actually bodes well for their workforce. Um, who I think are getting top dollar because they're hard to find. Um, I think we'd miss out on a lot of, um, a lot of contractors just simply wouldn't bid on the projects because it's, it's too much trouble. I mean, when you think about the kind of record keeping we're asking them to do and, you know, it doesn't, it talks about fringe benefits or, or cash value, but it doesn't explain what those benefits are and how you determine the cash. I mean, it's, it's just very hard to enforce, even if we, even if we had that list of numbers, you know, we still need sole compliance infrastructure, uh, to, you know, to figure it out. So kind of shooting ourselves in the foot, you know, one toe at a time here, uh, with this, I think. Two, you know, a two-year hiatus, um, particularly given these incredibly large projects. I mean, 2.4 million dollars is a very big chunk of change. Uh, and having gone through now a budget process, I don't, I don't have any, any qualms at all about waiving this. If, I, I, I thought though, there was some that we, we couldn't actually waiver, waive a, an ordinance, we had to suspend it or convert it to a policy or.
Yeah, I think, I think the plan here right now is that we were having this discussion to see what people wanted to do. Get a sense of where we go. If you want to keep things, then we'll just keep the things. If you were to, you know, if we need to actually amend the ordinance or waive it, then we would put it on for readings and go through the formal process. To this, the, the, it had come up earlier and the request was, let's put it on a council meeting for discussion. So this is really getting a sense of where we'd like to go and then we'd work out. So we, you can't really do it tonight, you could just say, this is, uh, we'd like to see, this is what we'd like to see and come up.
Because to do a waiver, suspension would essentially, would essentially require an amendment to the ordinance.
Yeah. An ordinance override. We, we did that, we, we did that with our Parkland ordinance. We suspended the existing ordinance, put in a substitute ordinance for two years. Yeah, period. Because, yeah. Lauren. We still went through the process.
Well, I was going to say, I definitely, but it sounds like so we're saying we would need public hearings or we would need to do the normal. Okay, okay, just, just because like we spent a long time on this when we adopted it and there were like to just not hear the case for why we did it, not get any information. Like, I wouldn't, like, I don't know that it's 2.4 million for, because maybe there's like a lot of equipment and it's less labor. Or, so I just feel like there's a lot of like numbers being thrown around, but I, I, is it really this like incremental increase when, you know, people are getting paid really well right now because of the shortage in the labor market? Are people really getting paid that much less? Like, I just find it frankly, hard to believe that there's like that big a difference that we would. So anyway, I just feel like I would want more information and we did this based on a set of values as a community that I would just, yeah, like, so I think at a public hearing, we could hear the case for why, um, why we even adopted this in the first place, which I think is valuable to hear. And then, you know, it's totally reasonable to bring this proposal forward and say, you know, we had a massive flood and maybe we wanted, you know, expedite some projects, but we're doing it, you know, at the cost of, you know, a value that we held of people working in our city on big projects should be getting a livable wage. And so I would just look forward to having a fuller conversation than making, so I'm glad we're not making any decisions tonight.
Yeah, no, yeah, definitely not.
Yeah, that would, that would definitely be the process and, and, you know, to, you know, sort of provide some support for Kurt here is, you know, we're feeling just an enormous amount of pressure to get the work done and to stretch dollars as far as we can. And we're, you know, we're looking everywhere we can. And so, you know, this is your policy, right? We're taking our tax, our local tax dollars and we're investing them out however we think is appropriate. And, you know, Kurt's being charged with getting every last foot of pavement and every last foot of pipe. And, and so, you know, we're trying to, we're saying, you know, we, we're, we're looking everywhere, you know, we're, so, I, that, that's where we're at. Uh, but obviously it's, it is your choice and you all adopted it for the reasons you adopted it. And that's great and we're not, we're, we're calling something to your attention, just like that's what you pay us.
Yep.
Kerry.
Yeah, thanks. Um, so I'm hoping we can, we cannot talk about this again and just be done with it tonight. That would be my preference. Um, this is the third time we've talked about it and we keep saying, we're only talking about whether we're going to keep talking about it. So I'm done talking about it. Um, but if we bring it back the next time, I want it to be with some action attached to it. I don't want to have another conversation where we're going to talk about, maybe we're going to talk about it. And I think we need to be really clear that what we are considering, what was, what's being, what we are being asked to consider is to, uh, try to save the city some money by paying people less for their work. So let's just, just be really clear about that. And if that's, and I mean, I don't think you're, you're trying not to be clear about that, but I just think the public needs to understand that, that, that we have this ordinance because we have values that said, we think that people should get paid a prevailing wage for their work. And now we're saying, we're, or we're considering the idea that it's too expensive, actually. So we were only interested in paying, in paying people prevailing wage when we felt like we could afford it. And now we don't, so we're going to pay less. And that's not a value that I'm comfortable with. I'm also really interested in a more definitive answer to the question of whether our own city employees are getting paid prevailing wages. Because if they're not, then this ordinance is completely pointless and should be done away with entirely until we can get that part sorted out.
I saw a couple of hands in the room, so I want to get them. Steve.
Uh, Steve sees again from North Street, which I always say is where the potholes live. And I have a vested interest, I think, in seeing infrastructure projects go forward as, as expeditiously as possible. I'm kind of new to this, um, issue, but I understand that, or anecdotally, I've heard that some contractors choose not to bid on jobs in my period because of this ordinance. And I wonder, Sal kind of touched on this a minute ago, but Kurt, I wondered, do you have any direct, uh, knowledge that, that we are not getting a, a wide range of, of bids because of the ordinance?
I mean, I, I can't say that for, with certainty. Uh, I can say with School Street, we got only one bid.
Ah, okay. Um, that may be a subject to look into. I do, um, support the, the staff's recommendation to move this forward to a, I guess, to an actionable item. Um, I understand Council Brown's concerns and Council Howells, but I think that a public discussion and a full airing of the issue at this point in the, in the wake of the, uh, the floods and the horrendous issues that we're facing makes sense. And at that point, both all sides can be heard and we can, as Council Brown recommended, take final action. So we're not just sitting around yakking about all the time. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Lisa.
It's, it's another street, um, where we don't have enough potholes. I appreciate it. Um, I want to second what Sal's saying. I have way more experience this year with contractors than I ever intended on having. And I can tell you absolutely, this comes up immediately, every single one. And the first question is, do we have to pay the bacon wages? Do you understand, and I had to look up what bacon wages were because I had no, I mean, just the phrase was so unusual to me. And what I'm hearing over and over and over again is contractors being like, oh no, then I'm not even bidding on the project. Just this morning, Mike Miller sat with me, well, a contractor looked at me and said, wait a second, you have to understand. And I recognize he's throwing out numbers here, but I'm surprised to hear you say it's only 10%. Because he was like, look, a contract that's a hundred thousand dollars, you add this to it, I'm adding 150 to 175 would be the total cost of that. And what he kept saying is, this isn't about what we're paying my guys, it's the tracking, it's the bookkeeping, it's the, it, it's the fact that it's exactly what you're saying. Every single task is at a different pay rate. And what they're just saying is, no, look, we have so many projects out there, we're not even dealing with it, it's not worth our time. And so for me, I'm really seconding this, that at a time when there are so many projects and we can't get anyone to do them and people are booking out two and three years, this is the difference on whether they're even looking at our projects or not. And from what I'm hearing from contractors, it's not impacting what people are being paid. Their horror of it is about the tracking and the paperwork. And the smaller groups, they're just not willing to take projects that they have to deal with this. And they're really straight up with that. And it's one of the first two or three questions I get every single time. And so I want to throw that out there because I know nothing, I'm just experiencing this over and over and over and had to look it up to figure out what this was.
Thanks, Lisa. Steve.
Yeah, I want to support the ask that you suspend the ordinance or substitute a, a, an ordinance in place for now. The market is so competitive right now, there's so much work out there that we are, uh, and the costs of administering and the potential privacy leaks, uh, of that kind of record keeping. Uh, we're shooting ourselves, we're shooting all our toes off by doing this right now. People, I'm seeing the tradespeople being well paid right now, all of them that I talk to, everybody's well paid. So I, I think it's overreach for the city to try to be enforcing minimum wages. You know, that's, that's a state and a federal, uh, thing and, and we can't be too politically correct right now.
Thanks, Steve. Uh, Phil Dodd.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yep.
Thanks, I'm Phil Dodd. Um, it makes me nervous when I hear Kurt saying he's nervous. Um, we have a lot of infrastructure needs in the city. The flood has just made everything worse. I feel like we're in a crisis. I think a two-year hold is reasonable. Uh, we can look at it again and perhaps tweak it at that time, but, uh, I would support staff on this one. Thank you.
Thanks, Phil. Mike.
Yeah, Mike Miller, Planning Director. So, yeah, as Lisa pointed out, we did have a meeting this morning with folks talking about building elevations. And, uh, she, the, the piece she didn't convey to you is that it will impact her and it'll impact anyone who we do building elevations for because those elevations will be between 200 and 300,000 dollars, which would potentially trip into the prevailing wage rules. So for them, their concern was, his concern was the, the actual tracking of the time that he has to hire somebody to stand there and do all the paper tracking while the projects are going on in order to demonstrate compliance with the rules. It wasn't actually that he wasn't paying the prevailing wage. Um, that was his concern was that, um, it's actually paying an additional employee who wouldn't otherwise have to be there to be there to track and keep track of everything. And that, that was, that was their concern and it will, so it'll impact our pass-through grants, which I think, um, Kurt had mentioned, you know, these, these HMGP projects. So when we talk, start talking about the building elevation projects where we're helping individual homeowners, these are the costs that, that also get tagged onto those projects as well. So that's why it would affect Lisa. And I just wanted to make sure it was clear, that's why it impacts her and others that those money are going through.
So that's where the proposal to go from 200 to 300 comes from.
I don't know where that came from. I just know in this, in this case, I had always thought the number was 200,000. Um, and when we're talking about building elevations, we're talking about 180 to 200,000. So some of them may be below that, but in Lisa's case, it's almost certainly going to be 200,000 in the low, probably in that lower area. It, she would be triggered in at the $200,000 level.
Okay.
So the level were increased, it would exempt that, for those particular projects. But I just wanted to make sure it was clear, that's why it, that's why it impacted. And that's what his comment was, was about paying additional employees who otherwise wouldn't need to be there.
Gotcha, thanks. So.
Let me just add to that, that again, in my experience, but I, I think it's probably true in this case as well. What, what this leads to is by, um, essentially, uh, closing out the smaller, you know, family-run shops, you end up getting bids only from the larger companies who already have people on staff to track that stuff. But they, they're also charging more because they've got, their overhead is higher. And so you're getting bids only from the, the big, the big guys and the, the small contractors who could do the work, uh, but shy away from it because they got other places they can, can go because they do not have, uh, the wherewithal or inclination frankly, to, to do what it takes to keep track of all this.
Kerry.
Uh, so I, I appreciate that I don't have the direct experience that some of the folks are, are saying here, but, um, um, i- if it is onerous to keep track of how much you're paying your employees and report that in, to the city, then let's figure out a way to make that less onerous. Let's figure out a way to streamline that. They, they know what they're paying their employees. We don't, they don't need to hire an extra person to stand there and watch people work and count how many hours they work. So I'm just, I don't, I don't buy that, that whole, I, I don't, I don't believe it. Uh, but I do believe that there is, that it's adding an extra layer of paperwork and administrative work to do all the reporting to the city. And I imagine there's a way that we could ease that.
Lauren.
Yeah, I was kind of thinking along the same lines. It sounds like people are really reacting to like Davis Bacon as a federal program with onerous federal tracking requirements. Like, we don't need to replicate that internally. It could be like certify upfront that you pay the Vermont prevailing wage, sign it. If we found out that there was a complaint, but we're not following you or requiring extensive documentation. You know, and maybe we do that for a, a time period and down the road, maybe we'd want to actually do some more tracking or something to make sure that it's happening. But like, I definitely don't think we should be requiring extensive paperwork.
So just to that point, for, to the first point, I, I agree, like, you know, why is it?
So just to that point, to the first point, I I agree, like, why is it costs so much? But it's because every different task they do in the course of a day has a different pay rate. So you could work your first couple hours doing this, then you go over and start flagging and that's got a different pay rate. So someone has to document, not just, I worked eight hours in this, it was, I worked two hours at this classification, three hours at this, so.
Don't they have to do that so that they can get paid?
Well, I think normally, I think if they were just doing it themselves, they'd just say, I'm paying you 15 bucks an hour, 20 bucks an hour to do whatever you do all day, like we do with the city. They don't track these different rates, which they have to submit for the the grant reimbursement. So that I think that's the complexity that we're talking about. The the, basically, what you're talking about is what we do now. They just sign and say, I'm doing it. So we have no audit, we have no way to be sure they're doing it. So we're just taking their word that they are. And, you know, so I think that's what it is like. How do we know that it's actually happening, but we know that people are reacting to it? So I think that's, so it's kind of like, are are we really getting the value that that we're asking for? We don't know. Or are they just charging more for it and keeping it as profit? You know, we don't know. We have no way of knowing that. And, you know, I get the point. We don't want to pay people less. It's just, you know, I I'm not sure. We have no way of knowing if it's working.
If I could make one final comment. I spent 30 years writing articles for contractors on why they should keep a timesheet, why their workers should keep a timesheet, breaking down how they spend their day because it improves their ability to estimate. And, you know, in the end, you know, their bottom line and yada, yada. And I I didn't make that much headway in 30 years. And 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 these are companies who are doing, you know, two or three million dollars in total gross revenue per year as their company's doing 50 million, who are not doing this. They don't, they're just paying people. So it's just to say the interesting, the other, the other part is the fringe stuff, which I was mentioning. I mean, I don't know whether, Lisa, if you or guys were even aware that there's a that that you either have to pay the wage or you have to end the benefits, or you have to pay the cash value of the benefits. A lot of these smaller companies have very minimal, if any, benefits, and that's not a great thing. But they don't, they don't have it, and so they don't, they don't even bid on the work.
Trying to figure out, get a handle on this question of how burdensome the reporting is. Is it, is this state prevailing wage rate in a document that someone could go and look at? And I assume it has a bunch of tables with Flagler prevailing wage rate is X per hour. Steamroller driver is X per hour, all those things.
That's correct.
And so if a contractor goes, is is told to go look at that table and just certify that it's it's paying its workers at a minimum in compliance with what that state prevailing wage rate is. And that's, is that basically what they're doing now?
That's right. That's how the ordinance is currently structured. They sign a certificate of compliance and there's a sign-in sheet where whoever's on site that day has to sign in. Those are basically the two requirements. But like Bill said, there's no, there's no audit ability by the city or any, you know, it says they have to retain records, but there's no ability for the city to look at those records.
Well, that doesn't seem that burdensome to me. Okay. So, Tim, you look like you're about to say something. Correct me if I'm wrong.
I was thinking, it's it's a motion, but we're not taking action other than to to give a sense to the staff of how we'd like to proceed, right?
Well, I think so. A motion would either be let's just leave it the way it is, or schedule a first reading for something else.
Like to move that we consider going with staff's recommendation and moving it for a first reading for a two-year hiatus on the rule.
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
Okay. We'll do a roll call. Lauren?
Yes.
Palin?
Yes.
Was that, I'm sorry, was that yes? Okay, thanks. Tim?
Yes.
Sal?
Yes.
Carrie? Adrian?
Yes.
Motion carries. We'll schedule this for public hearing, but it's, it sounds as though the public hearing is not where the proposal is not this package of amendments, just suspension for two years. Okay. Thanks, folks. Thanks, Kurt. Water note, I know, because because we're sticking with, we're on water now. Water notification policy.
Yes, so there, we've had a fair number fair number of water breaks this year, as we do most years. And there's been been a lot of discussion about how we notify residents when there is a water break. And there's, there's a lot of different scenarios. There's cases where we need to do a boil water notice. There's cases when we don't. Sometimes there's road closures. Sometimes a very large area is impacted. Sometimes it's a very small area. So I hand drew up what I thought would be kind of a good method to deal with this. And then Evelyn polished it and made it look really nice, which I appreciate.
It does.
So in your packets, there's, there's a flow chart basically of how we, how we handle notices when we have water breaks. So we had a water break. Is there boil water? Yes or no? If it's no, then then we're just doing a localized VT alert, which is just the area that's impacted for those residents that are that are going to lose water likely. And then we put it on notify me, which anybody can sign up for. So people that want to get all the notices have the ability to do that through the notify me process, which is on the website. And then from there, we look at road closure. If it's not, then we'll just kind of end it there. If it is, then we're going to do a citywide VT alert so that, and you know, traveling public knows that the road's closed, so we can fix the leak. So that's the, that's the no side of the boil water notice. And if there is a boil water, and then we make the distinction of how large an area is impacted by the break. So if it's a, if it's a huge part of the city, even on School Street, when we had a construction shutdown, we had almost 250 notices to put out between 5:00 AM and 8:00 AM, and it was challenging. We considered that not big enough not to do hand notices, but we ran out of time to get all the hand-delivered notices out because it was so big. So there are areas that are a little gray, and so it's not going to be 100% perfect. And and what we really want to do is encourage people to sign up for these electronic notices because, you know, the the days of hand-delivered paper notices at some point has to come to an end. It's it's really burdensome on our staff. You know, it takes hours to do these notices. And, you know, we're printing tons and tons of paper to to hand out for a one-time use. So what we've talked about recently is trying to try to set a timeline, a goal. And then like, you know, a year and a half, can we, can we start a messaging campaign to residents to say, this is how we're going to notify electronically. You have to sign up for these things and give them a year and a half to do that. But we can, we can go down, talk about that later potentially, or we can, staff can develop a plan for that. So the distinction between how big the the shutdown is, if it's a very large area, hand-delivered notices are just not feasible. So we do a citywide VT alert. We get it on a press release. We do radio ads. And we put it on our website and we do on the notify me. If it's not a small area, then we're for now doing hand-delivered notices, the localized VT alert, which is just the areas impacted, notify me on the website. So that's, so we'd like council to sort of approve this plan tonight, and then we will advertise it and and really encourage folks to sign up for the electronic notification.
And so Kurt, one of the things that that I think about, I I think this is a good good approach to this. One of the things I think about is we had a comment from someone who said, yeah, I don't live in the affected area, but that's where I take my kid to daycare. And so I didn't get a notification, drove the drove to the daycare center and that's how I found out.
Yeah. So in that case, if they were on notify me, they would, they would get the notice. But the concern with using VT alerts for everything is that people start numbing to it. If you overuse it, people stop reading them. And so I'd really trying to avoid putting a VT alert out every time there's a break anywhere. They, it just affects a small area. I think it works counter to on the effectiveness of the notice.
But if you sign up and notify me, anything we put out for DPW, you can get from it. So that's one way to get anything from anywhere in the city.
Adrian?
Thinking like old school, back in the olden days, you know, like the telephone tree. Remember that? I don't know, but like human contact and, you know, when our neighborhood, we have a very strong community network and we all know each other, so we can go knock on people's doors and, you know, some folks don't, you know, have computers or smartphones, like it doesn't exist still. So I know those people, like if I were alerted, I'd go tell them that the, you know, the water's off. But I think there could be potentially to consider like another level below of grassroots community canvassing so that the city is not ultimately responsible for printing papers and going door by door because that's clearly not sustainable. But we have great people in our community that could be like a champion or like a something for, you know, that community to help spread the word. I don't know what that would look like. I know we've kind of had that structure in the past. We've maintained in our community, some communities haven't, but it's something to think about.
Just, yes. And and like you said, it's intermittent, it's different in different places. But I just want to be clear, if if you have a landline phone, you can get called by VT alert. You don't need, you you can sign up for phone calls or texts or email or all three.
Clear instructions, because I don't know the guy even knew that. And so that's good to know, right? So what I'm telling my neighbors, like, hey, if you got your landline, like, let's set you up. I didn't know that, honestly.
You just put in a phone number, it calls the phone.
Yeah, I I mean, I know you've done an excellent job with your tutorials and thank you for that. I try to spread it as far and wide as I possibly can. And it's good to have these systems, but it's also good to monitor the systems to figure out where you are now in terms of your coverage for alerts and then identify those gaps. Because there might be whole neighborhoods that never signed up. And so who, where are those gaps? And how do you then have that like very targeted approach to say, hey, here's a note, you know, whatever it is, like a campaign to get those numbers up. But you need to know where you are now, where those gaps are, and be very strategic on how to fill them so that you can get people signed up. So that could be a strategy.
And the other, the other piece, I think, to consider when you talk about using neighborhood volunteers is that sometimes these breaks are at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning and they're trying to get people notified too. So it's just, you know, they're not, it's one thing when you have a scheduled break. You know, we we talked today about maybe, you know, supplementing with police and fire folks if they're available. They're not already on other calls, if they can help. But it is not a great use of city resources to have people, you know. And we've had cases where people have put stuff out in the middle of the night and someone gets up in the morning, so I didn't get a notice because they haven't gone out yet and it's hanging on their door. So there's, there is no perfect system, but we 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 wanted you to see what we're trying to do and get your feedback.
Lauren?
Yeah, I mean, I think this is a great, great model and agree, like, I mean, it sounds like the goal of getting everyone on notify me seems like a great goal, like as much as we possibly can. I'm wondering about the the Maple, the Montpelier Action Plan. Like, could there be like a test run or a way to plug that crew in? Part of which is like community engagement in how are we notifying people for emergencies? This is like a small-scale localized emergency, but can we get that like network of people, maybe take something off your plate, be like, can you guys do a campaign or something that could be like a public education campaign? So I mean, I'm happy to bring that to the commission and see if there could be a way to like build a, you know, maybe it's like a little pilot project of that to to get going. But then once people are signed up for this, then that's helpful for all future things. So they might be able to be helpful.
Carrie?
Yeah, I think this looks great, good flow chart. I think it looks really good and you should do that. And I didn't, I don't think I I knew that notify me worked with landlines. I thought it was just.
I don't think notify me does.
Well, then.
VT alert does.
Okay.
I said VT alert does because they make a phone call. Notify me is only like an email, but notify me is the citywide one.
I know.
Yeah.
So so if I'm trying to get the of the DPW alerts and but you don't want to send out all of them on VT alert because you don't want to be.
Right.
Then the only way to get them is notify me, but if I don't have a cell phone or email, I can't get that. So I I don't.
That's correct.
Okay, great. So sorry, I'm sounding, I'm sounding cranky and impatient. Because I know you all are working super hard and doing great. On St. Paul Street yesterday, we had no water and I signed up for all the things. And so I got all the notification the night before, great. And and I knew that the the procedure was to put notices on people's doors because then I thought about my neighbor who I'm 100% sure has no internet or texting. And then my other neighbor here, I'm sure he doesn't. And then the people over there who, I don't really know them that well, but I kind of suspect that they're not hooked in either. And but they're okay because you put the notices on the doors, but you didn't put the notices on the doors. And I understand how that happened and it's, you know, it happens and it's fine. And then the next day they went out and everything. But that, but that we, there, there are times when we we have to let people know. We we can't say, I mean, there were, you know, old people with no resources and no connection who are just sitting in their house wondering what happened to the water? Is it coming back on? Is it not coming back on? I got a sink full of dishes. And I mean, this is what my neighbors told me when I started going out and like knocking on doors because I realized that I didn't have anything on my door, so that my neighbors must not have either. So let's just, let's just not forget that. Let's just keep that in mind. And yes, no system is perfect and we're never going to get everybody. But if we could change notify me, so it it would call landlines or if we had some way that people could sign up to get called on their landline, that would be.
So VT alert does call. You can sign up for a call or a text or an email or all three. So what we're saying is if there's a localized area, so if we can, we can actually draw a grid around an area and it will call all the numbers in that area. So under that scenario, the landline person would have got a phone call. Notify me just is a general, we put all kinds of stuff in notify me. Oh, you know, this is what's coming next week. It's for people that want to know everything that's going on with DPW, including emergency announcements. And that is only an email thing. So that's different. That is not that that's a supplemental alert. VT alert is the emergency alert. And that's the the one, so if somebody has to sign up for one thing, I'd sell them, sign up for VT alert.
Okay.
Because that's the one we're going to use. That's, you'll see, that's there at the beginning of everything. And it's only a question of how wide we do the VT alert.
Sal?
So I'm at the Montpelier Vermont.org/list site, and there's like a bazillion things you can sign up for. The one we want is news slash public works. Is that right? BPW News, we should say that here. And we should, I think, say how you can get it, you know, you can get it. Email, in other words, without they're having to figure that out from the site, right here where we're giving them the URL. Say email, cell phone, text, landline, if if that applies, just so they don't have to find it. But, yeah.
And the other thing we're gonna, we talked about doing today is, which I don't know why. And the other thing we're gonna, we talked about doing today is, um, which I don't know why we hadn't thought of it earlier, but is when we do the, while we're still doing notices, is put on the notice. You know, you should sign up for these, so that you get the handwritten notice, and particularly if we end up setting a, a discontinuance date, like, you know, January, by January one twenty twenty six, we're gonna no longer do this, or, you know, so you have fifteen months to sign up for these options.
I, I think this is all very good. I, I, I'm clear that there are some people that, that are just not gonna get this and it's gonna be mostly poor people, people who may not, uh, speak English, um, people who are already in, uh, at the bottom of a lot of other things, but, but I don't know that there's a way around that. We, we need to just keep making our government as responsive as it can possibly be. Steve.
The only way I can see this working equitably is in combination with the commu-, the, the neighborhood associations. Because I know a number of people who don't have email or text or phone even, or landline, and and, and don't want to subscribe to those things. So we, we can't just leave them, and, and then when you mentioned it's the poor who might not have the phones, they're the ones who can least afford to get intestinal troubles from drinking bad water, so we we need to make sure we leave no one behind with this notification structure, even if it means it's a agent in each neighborhood knows exactly which six addresses they have to deliver these to.
Well, I, although I will say, and this is, uh, kind of a surprising experience to me when I you, I've spent my entire career in, as a legal aid lawyer and back when I started back in nineteen seventy nine and into the early eighties, tremendous share of the clients I represented didn't have a phone, period. And the way we contacted them was we would, they would give us their mother's phone number or their next door neighbor's phone number or something, and I would have to call and leave a message and hope they would call back. Now, almost all of my clients have phones and whether they, whether they answer them, whether they, uh, set up their voicemail, all of those things are, uh, are big ifs, but almost all of them have phones now.
I also forgot to mention that to see all the kids show up for story time at the library and be turned away was heartbreaking and there's no way that your alert system could have avoided that. That was yesterday.
So, do you, do you wanna vote, or do you think, I think you, you're hearing is people are pretty satisfied with this.
Yeah. No, that's fine, just approval to publicize this as our, as our method, be great.
Thanks Kurt. All right, um, City Council reports. Adrian, you wanna start with you?
Sure, and I think mine will probably be in tandem with Sal's, but I'll get it started, one of our, one of mine. I'm selling that.
Kick, get to him.
I will kick it to him, cause he has something to share. I forgot mine at home. Darn it, it was on my table. Anyway, so Sal and I attended, um, we were invited to participate in the All Brains Belong Community Health Fair on Saturday, was it Saturday or Sunday?
Saturday.
It was Saturday, um, at the State House and I am very involved in All Brains Belong, it's a great organization. Um, they've helped my daughter many ways, who's on the spectrum and supported her through her journey. And we were able to, um, work with and meet with an autistic child that communicates through, um, I don't know, it's like a, a, a letter card. Letter points at the letter card and did a, a rap song on how he can, how, what he feels, that's how he communicates. And so we had the honor of meeting him and his family, learning about his journey, and, um, Sal really did most of the work, um, he presented the family with the key to the city. And, um, it was just a really magical moment and they gave us some beautiful artwork from the young, um, gentleman, I think he was nine. Nine years old, so, um, I'll let Sal share the, the pictures, but it was, it was great.
We got these, um, pieces of art, so there's a, a pieces of art also done by a neurodiverse, young neurodiverse artist. And this is, uh, Hassan Ahmed's message. They, they, together, these two are, they're paid podcasters for this organization called Kind Theory. And they, um, they invented this podcast called Give Us A Minute. And this is what Hassan put, he wrote on here, and I asked his mother, I said, you know, how did he come up with his face? He's nine years old. And he, you know, this is his, he made, this is his statement. No coaching, pointed out all the letters. The difference between your mind and mine may be perceived as a gap, but your decisions can build bridges. The kid is nine years old. He's amazing. Um, let me just, if I can, I'm not gonna read the whole letter, but one paragraph. Two of our youngest neurodivergent contributors, Ashvita Kunder and Hassan Ahmed, have been inspired by our mission to start the project, Give Us A Minute. They had gifted you and others this art piece to help remind people in positions of change-making to consider neurodivergent experiences and needs in their decisions. One in five people will benefit directly from neurodivergent affirming policies, and we all benefit from more inclusive communities. There, those people are pictured on the back of these, so if we could find a place for these.
I have one too, I just forgot.
It'd be great.
I can bring it in.
It was, uh, it was just a wonderful experience to meet this, this kid who, um, and they really only discovered that he could do this in the last eighteen months or so. They thought he was not listening or he didn't have the intellect, and then he started pointing and they said, how did you learn all this? And he, he, he had taught himself to read. Right? I mean, it's just, it's, it's amazing. Anyway, it was, it was a couple of hours worth, worth, worth spend, spending.
Carrie. Helen. Lauren. Okay, uh, Mayor's Report, I have a couple of items. One, uh, many of us saw as we were, uh, getting ready for our, our meeting, uh, this evening, an email that just came down came out saying that, um, in the, uh, there's being, there's a transition at Good Samaritan Haven and, uh, Julie Bond is becoming, uh, the sole, uh, executive director and Rick DeAngelis is, uh, moving to, uh, an advisory role and I just want to express my appreciation, uh, for, for Rick who's, uh, spent a career working, uh, and advocating for affordable housing, uh, for, for really people who, uh, who, who need it the most and, um, and he's been a great, uh, asset and benefit to the community, and so I appreciate all the work that Rick has done over the years and also my appreciation for Julie for stepping up to do this because with everything they have done, it is, uh, it's a huge job, and so thank you to the organization and to both of them for doing this. Second, this afternoon, I was, I had the opportunity to be at a, at a ribbon cutting at, uh, John and Liz Snell's house for, uh, celebrate their, uh, conversion to, uh, heat pumps for a significant part of their heat, and it was demonstrating how the, uh, funding made available through the Inflation Reduction Act and, uh, you know, Efficiency Vermont have made it possible to have a tremendous impact on their energy use and, um, a step towards our goal of being net zero city and, uh, and so it's, it's the kind of thing that, the only way we get there is not only by what we're doing here in the city, but also by what, uh, volunteers and homeowners all across the city are doing to, uh, to save energy and reduce our climate impact, and as I was sitting there at the, standing there at the uh, ribbon cutting, I, I was thinking, oh, wait a minute. My wife and I just put in a couple of fireplace inserts and that was part of the, uh, part of the thing too, so, uh, so there's something we, we can all do. And, and finally, the last thing I've been working on, trying to figure out what is going on with our post office. And I can tell you that it is not easy to find out. It is not easy to, uh, find out who you need to talk to, to get the information. And when I finally reached the person who, uh, should have the information and I, I said to him, well, when's the, uh, what's the timeline now? And he told me, that's above my pay grade, and I said, well, okay, well, what is the name and phone number of the person above your pay grade that can tell me that information? And I was met with silence. So I know that work is going on in the building and I asked him to let me know the next time he's gonna be here to, uh, to be touring the site. Let me know so I can go through it with you and see what, what's going on. But work is going on, but the only thing they could tell me about, uh, due dates is that all the dates they have established are in the past, so. So there we are, that's life in our capital city. And that's what I've got, City Clerk's report.
Just wanna remind anybody listening that this coming, the general election, uh, folks are automatically getting sent mailed a ballot, uh, by the Secretary of State. Everybody gets one. I had a lot of folks asking about, uh, early voting and I get to assure them that ask or not, you're gonna get one. Um, so just, just for you, all of that comes up too.
And John, is this something where people are gonna get the entire ballot, they're not gonna get like, some of it comes in the mail and some of it you have to request, the way it was with the primary?
No, this is all one, one, one single ballot. It's a nice, easy election this time. Yes, we do, port of abatement tomorrow. Be there.
Six thirty, Senior Center.
Bill.
Uh, just got a couple of things, um, I guess first, this is our first meeting, um, that we've had, to just recognize the life and service of Senator Bill Doyle, who passed away. Uh, that's why our local municipal flag has been at half mast for order of the mayor, um. You know, I, I, I hope heaven can keep up with all the meals that Bill's had at the same time. Um, he, he was a, a giant at being at every event you could possibly be at, but, uh, he certainly served our region for a long time honorably and, uh, passed away at ninety-eight, so good for him, life well lived. Um, since we had our last, uh, special meeting, which turned into a more full meeting, we certainly have continued to struggle with, uh, issues with homelessness, we continue to work, you know, basically you affirmed that we, we continue working on our policy, we are trying to work with folks. Uh, and, you know, we have had more people coming, uh, and more disruptive actions, so we're trying to focus on those. We've had some arrests up there for for disorderly conduct and assault and a few other things. We did have to remove a, a, a trailer out of there. So we're trying to, still trying to figure out the best option. We actually met with the state's attorney today, not that we wanna start arresting people, but we wanted to make sure we understood what what the options were, particularly for people that were more difficult than others, uh, and, and how we could, how we could work on that situation. We went up and viewed the site. And I've actually, uh, called through the VLCT, which I happen to be president of, I've called a meeting of several communities who are dealing with this. We're gonna try to arrange a meeting for next week just to share, you know, what we're all doing and what resources we have and see if we can all get on the same page as far as what works and what doesn't work, uh, those kinds of things. Um, so we are definitely, you know, it's probably, you know, not, it's nothing to joke about, but we say, you know, it's like, we're basically just doing homelessness and flooding these days and that's about it. It feels like everything else is you know, we're not, even, you know, DPW gets it, so. It's definitely on our minds, so that's happening and as things happen, we will keep you well informed, but it's a, it's a tough issue for all involved, you know, as I, I like to tell people and remind people, um, you know, there's no, right, the, the state doesn't allow people on their property. There's no cities that are allowing people on their public property. Private people aren't allowing that probably, there's, you know, no place for someone to legally be. So we have to think about this with a heart while we're trying to figure out where to, where to move them, but, you know, we, the city, you know, we don't know where they all are, but, but that's why we're working with our partners to figure that out. And so that's where we're at.
So I got. Phil, it, it is ten forty-eight, just a final note, I appreciate this is one of those meetings where we had, uh, couple of issue, difficult issues with strong feelings on all sides, and I appreciate the, uh, the way that people were able to discuss every, everything that came before us. And with that, at ten forty-eight, we are in, we are adjourned.